Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:00 PM somewhere, maybe a minute late. May 2, 2016. I have a reputation of always being a couple of minutes late, apparently, so I thought it would be appropriate that you've got people to chat to. It's easy to be slow. We were down the hall very quickly for a few minutes on a closed camera, closed meeting or in-camera session. We're now moving into the regular meeting. Are there any additional items? Staff? Mr. Ritchie?
Mr. Parker and I have one on the upcoming service review next Monday night, Your Worship.
And Counsel, McManaman?
Thank you. Just one item on the upcoming Sports Hall of Fame Dinner this Friday night.
Any other down there? Counselor Gregg?
I do have a couple of items. Mentioned Trillium Grant for the Alzheimer Society, Gray Bruce, the On Sound Field Naturalist Dinner with, or not dinner, but a night with John Riley and the Hike for Hospice.
Thank you. Any others that direction? Any that direction? No? Good. Even more time for me. I'll have a couple of events that I've participated in the last few weeks to talk about. Disclosure of pecuniary interests, general nature thereof. Anybody seeing? No one put their hands up. Number five, confirmation of minutes. Counsel McManaman?
Thank you. Worship moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Keppke, that the minutes of the regular council
I need to pivot.
meeting held on April 18, 2016 as printed be adopted.
"We are here this evening to celebrate the work of volunteers in the city of On Sound.
And all in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
This evening is about recognizing the efforts and the achievements of those who dedicate
There's another set there.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Wright, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Wright, that minutes
their time and abilities to helping others.
of the special council meeting held on April 27, 2016 as printed be adopted.
Volunteers are the backbone to many organizations.
And all in favor?
They are giving of their time and labor and expect very little in return.
That is carried. Thank you. Number six, resolution.
Thank you.
Volunteers are people from all walks of life, all ages and stages.
Worship moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thomas, that City Council now go in committee
What they have in common is a desire to make a difference in their community and in their
of the whole to consider public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters
own life by giving their time and expertise.
arising from correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for each notice was previously
The individual we are honoring tonight exemplifies these traits and should be commended for her
given, and other business.
And all in favor?
vital contribution to the vibrancy, diversity, and strength of our community."
That is carried. Thank you. We are now in committee of the whole.
This year's volunteer, this year's Volunteer of the Year award recipient is Lois Gallon.
Number seven, public meetings. We have no public meetings. Number eight, deputations. This is a fun deputation.
Lois was nominated by the On Sound Camarades, who felt Lois was deserving volunteer and
I get to make this one tonight. Volunteer the Year Award, if Counsel will permit. I'll go down to the other podium.
should be recognized for her contributions.
Counsel McManaman, do you want to join me?
I would ask Lois Gallon to come forward to accept her award. Lois has been an active volunteer in the city of On Sound for over 60 years. She joined the J-Sets in 1954. During the 10 years she volunteered with the J-Sets, she held the position of President and helped fundraise through various initiatives. Lois's husband, Bob, who many will know as a counselor in town for 21 years, was also a JC. When his term with the J-Cs ended due to age limit, Lois and her other J-Sets wanted to stay together. They approached the Senior Chamber of Commerce to form a new community group. This is how the Camarades were formed in 1964. Lois is a founding member of the Camarades, has volunteered with the Camarades for over 50 years. She has held the position of President and helps make refreshments for various events and works at meet draws. For 62 years, Lois has been working at Bingo's to help fundraise for the community. But the Camarades were, when the Camarades were down to only six members, Lois is instrumental in helping to make the, to keep the club going. Today, the Camarades have 22 members. Her dedication to the community is evident through the various projects and programs supported by the Camarades. Other organizations have benefited also from Lois's selfless commitment of time and effort, including the Royal Canadian Legion, Summerfolk, Canadian Cancer Society, and the Heart and Stroke Foundation. Lois is a very responsible and dedicated volunteer who is always willing to help wherever she can. Her commitment and energy are very much appreciated, are an inspiration to all those who work with or around her. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in honoring Lois Gallon as a very deserving recipient of the city's Volunteer of the Year Award.
I guess I've done a lot over the years and I can't do it anymore, but I would like to, I would like to thank, excuse me, I would like to thank Donna Doherty for nominating me for this award. I would also like to thank those who voted for me. I have really enjoyed volunteering for the different jobs over the years, and it was a very rewarding, and I still am volunteering. I would like to thank you for the honor and recognition you have given me tonight. Thank you.
On behalf of all of us up here, now that we're back up in this seat, congratulations and thank you for everything that you do and all the volunteers in the city and everything that they do. Thank you. Our next deputation at 8B is Alar Congatz of the Architax, of Congatz Architects Firm, program conceptual design for a renovation of our existing On Sound City Hall. Welcome.
Thank you.
You may want to push the button just in front of you until the red light comes on. Perfect, then we can hear you. Thank you.
My name's Alar Congatz. I'm with Congatz Architects. We've been working with the senior staff and staff at the, at your city for the last, since just before Christmas, on looking at what, what possible options there are in the renovation and the redevelopment of the city hall. So we looked at a variety of things, mostly from, we started off looking at it from a functional viewpoint, both technical issues and then also how to make it function better in terms of offering services to the public. One of the things, when we first started, there seems to be real consensus, certainly among staff, and I imagine that those views are also translated from the community as well, that the city hall location, which you can see in the red, which is in a central position within the downtown core, that there is value in maintaining its present locations in the downtown, and for obvious reasons, it reinforces the, the business community in the downtown. It creates a kind of conglomeration of activities combined with the market, the library, the art gallery, that gets people in the downtown core and helps to develop businesses, restaurants, all the things that we appreciate within the communities that we live. The city hall is also an important symbol of community life. Being from Toronto, one of the things that, that although it's a very large city, everybody knows Toronto City Hall. It becomes a symbol of the city, and it's important in terms of how that symbol is conveyed to the public. And the present location, it's, it's certainly redeveloped from the original city hall, but it's still in the downtown core and the approximate location. It certainly is a symbol of community life within downtown. It anchors Christmas and special events that occur. It obviously provides a public service in the downtown. It's readily accessible, and it's also a source of pride and promotion of the city for visitors coming in. I mean, as someone new to On Sound, I mean, I have some sort of knowledge of the city, but once you, you know, if you look at the city hall, the memorial plaques and that, and the number of sort of important people that this community has historically, within its citizenry, is truly amazing, and I don't think there is a community of this size anywhere in Canada that has so many important people that have come from here. Obviously, the water is pretty good. So as, as I mentioned earlier on, we looked at it from three different points of view. We started off looking at a technical assessment of the building, its life cycle, the condition of the existing building in terms of the building envelope, the building services, the mechanical services, electrical services, the structural capacity of the building, and how the building relates to present-day building code requirements, and also how it relates to AODA requirements in terms of accessibility for the community. The second thing that we looked at was the functional program and how the building can extend the useful life of offering services to the community. We looked at programming and services that are located within the city hall, services that are presently not located within the city hall, that may be best relocated here. Within the city hall itself, we looked at where is the best location of who should be adjacent to who, and what, what departments, and how they function together. And then we also tried to set up a space standard so that staff, depending on their function and that, that there is some kind of standards that a staff of a certain hierarchical position or, or a certain service, that they would have a certain size of office, so that there is consistency from one staff to another, that directors would have the same size offices, managers would have similar offices and access to natural light. So we tried to provide some standards that where, where everyone working here has a similar set of benefits in terms of access to natural light, whether the office privacy and things like that. We also looked at future needs, that how can we build in within the existing city hall space that would accommodate some, some additional space down the road? We don't know what that space is, quite honestly, but in, in making an investment, it is prudent to, to allow something that can accommodate something in the future, even though we can't define what it is, so that there is enough space that if staff is added, or if there's a special program that needs to come in, that there is space within the existing building that can accommodate that down the road. We also looked at the building in terms of post-disaster, as a post-disaster center, so that if it can become a central communication point tied in with the fire department and the police department, and that the building can withstand a major storm, for instance. So we looked at those sort of program elements. And then the third thing that we did was we tested out a series of conceptual designs to see how they would function. So within the existing building, we looked at floor plans, how that, to make sure that things can fit where they, we think they fit, and we looked at costing options. And what we did was we looked at three options to give you a kind of a scale of, they all work basically the same way in terms of upgrading the base building, but some offer a bit more leeway in terms of a bit more space within the building, some better programming in terms of adjacencies. The next series of slides, I'll go back to the technical issues. There's a whole series of things that are, may not be totally evident on first walking around the building, but there's a series of things to do with how the building was built. This was a building that was built in 1960, and buildings that were built at that time had different priorities and, and different requirements in terms of building code requirements and that. So insulation, how vapor barriers work that, that prevent moisture from infiltrating walls were significantly different than what today's standards are. And one of the things that we noticed, there's a series of kind of failure conditions around the building, including caulking conditions, or where a precast panel, which is the banding that runs around the building, meets a soffit where there's deterioration because there wasn't a drip flashing. Or where parts of the precast have, have popped off, and you can see in where the circle is. There's precast there, and the, the face of the precast has popped off, and we think that's because there's water getting in behind the precast, and, and then there's a freeze thaw cycle, and it pops off the face, the exterior face of the built, of the, of the precast, because it's freezing, actually. There's also within the same slide, you can also see where water potentially is, whoops, where water is getting in through caulking that's deteriorated and that. Same conditions around soffits and windows. A major issue is around the perimeter of the building below the, the precast band that runs around the building, and if you go outside and you can see where the face of the brick is spalled off, and what's happened is moisture is getting in behind, and there's nowhere for the moisture to run, because, partly because of the caulking, and also partly because of the lack of insulation. So the water gets trapped in behind and, and runs down, and then there's nowhere for that water to run out. There's no weep holes around the perimeter, and what happens is the brick becomes wet, and again, during a freeze cycle, the brick freezes, so the moisture, the water inside the brick freezes, and it pops off the surfaces because the brick expands because of the water content within the brick. So it's like if you put a bottle of, plastic bottle or glass bottle in your freezer, you'll find that it'll explode. The same thing is happening here with the brick around the perimeter, and that's a pretty consistent condition. It also is occurring some, in some locations around the bottom of the building, again, where there are some weep holes, but they're not functioning properly. So again, moisture isn't able to escape the building, and it, and the brick surface is popping off. There's also a whole series of conditions related to around where the hydro vault is right now. We've had hy, the local hydro in, and, and there's moisture getting into the hydro vault, and also there's the, an age of the, the transformer itself, I believe is about approximately 40 years old, and it's at the end of the life cycle. But a more immediate air concern is the fact that potentially moisture coming in, so it's very restricted in terms of, of access to it even for hydro workers. But it is an immediate issue that needs to be addressed with some urgency at some point. Where I was talking earlier about the existing wall condition, the building essentially for a fair portion, the exterior wall is not insulated, and so in this diagram, which is a wall section, this is the precast panel here, the masonry here, the floor is here, there's a perimeter beam that runs around the perimeter, and what you're, what's happening, partially what's happening is there's warm air on the inside that's hitting the cold beam because there's no insulation from the cold air, and then potentially there's condensation forming on that beam and collecting at the intersection where the precast panels and the brick meet. So not only is there leakage, but there is this potential condensation issue that's causing the brick to, to deteriorate. And there's a whole series of these around the building. It's not an isolated condition, and in fact is a very typical condition for the building. All of these, all of these don't make the building, or the base structure of the building, it doesn't impose any danger, or it doesn't necessarily deteriorate that immediately, but over the long term it will. The existing structure, in fact, is quite sound, but it's all the, the kind of building science conditions that are occurring around the building, and for the most part due to a lack of insulation. And also partially also in how the mechanical system is working, that window conditions aren't tempered by air, warm air dropping down, and you're going to get in condensation on some window conditions as well, and that's evident also in the soffits, and also, it's also occurring inside the building at various locations as well. So we looked at, again, three options. This is a site plan of, and it incorporates the future Avenue One rerouting study that's underway right now, and with the new parking area here, the market, and sort of the improved access to the river, or in terms of improved green space around the river. These developments on the site will actually increase the parking, the number of parking spaces within the downtown, so that all that will serve the city hall well in terms of, during regular business days. The first option was basically looking at where to place the program elements in terms of where corporate services should be, where community services should be, and executive offices. So the desire was to bring those departments together into one location, into one area of the building. For instance, corporate services would have, the clerk's office would be there, along with the financial and that. Community services would include the building department, engineering, building department, So this is the, well, the council chamber is there, so this is community services here, or this is corporate services here, community services here. One of the things with all three schemes was looking at addressing a new entrance way to the building, and that partly has to do with we look, making the elevator AODA compliant, also incorporating a new exit stair to make the exiting from the building to current code standards. The, in past reports, there have been mention of upgrades to the elevator controls, but what the elevator, the upgrades to the controls don't do is they don't deal with the size of the elevator and the size of the cab to meet accessibility requirements. So in fact, you have to build a new elevator to meet those requirements. One of the things that we looked, one of the things on all the studies that we looked at was how to make things do double service. So if we have to relocate an elevator to another portion of the building, or incorporate a new stair into the building, how those can do more than address the, the handicap accessibility issues or the fire issues, but also can contribute to making the building a post-disaster center. One of the things that we found in the, and when we did the study with our engineers, was that the building itself is fine, is structurally very sound, but it, there is an issue with lateral bracing, which means that there's nothing, if you were pushing on one end of the building, the building could be pushed over. So if had a big, theoretically a big, huge gust of wind, building could potentially be pushed over. So what you try to do is you try to brace it with a rigid structure at some point, which the elevator core could do as well as the stair core. So by incorporating those things strategically somewhere into the plan, they also give you the benefit of not only meeting code standards, accessibility standards, but also the post-disaster center standards as well. The other, sorry, the other thing we've incorporated is some manifestation to the public of, of the renovation itself, where, like where a new meeting room could go that offers views of either the downtown or the river edge, something that manifests to the public so that there is some sort of sense of dollars, that the dollars that are being sent are actually sort of visible. Most of the money, these are rather small items, most of the money is actually going into fixing the infrastructure of the building. Again, the first option, A, basically renovates the building to current standards from a technical point of view. What it doesn't do, because it doesn't identify any additional space within the building, it doesn't allow you a lot of flexibility in terms of additional services that may be located here. For instance, there's been talk about consolidating engineering and the building partner into one location here. It wouldn't allow you to do that, so there's, there's just not enough physical space within the building. Also, there's a lack of storage on site and with scheme A. Scheme B is essentially the same as A, but one of the things that it does is the space that's under corporate services, we discovered through structural investigation, is actually fully, the foundations go all the way down, and it's been backfilled in with sand. So that space, so the structure is all there, goes all the way down, that sand can be excavated, and you have fairly economical space to make use of. It is below grade for a portion, but it is, you're picking up about 3,000 plus square feet of space there at a really, really economical cost. And one of the things, as we're reviewing with city staff, is it becomes a great place for an archive, central storage area for the city on its own premises. And what involves is a new floor slab, some insulation of the walls, but it gives you essentially found space for minimal dollars, and that, those minimal dollars are something like $300,000, $400,000, gives you 3,000 square feet, so $100 a square. be located here. For instance, there's been talk about consolidating engineering and the building apartment into one location here. It wouldn't allow you to do that. So there's, there's just not enough physical space within the building. Also, there's a lack of storage on site and with scheme A. Scheme B is essentially the same as A, but one of the things that it does is the space that's under corporate services, we discovered through structural investigation, is actually fully, the foundations go all the way down and it's been backfilled in with sand. So that space, so the structure is all there, goes all the way down. That sand can be excavated and you have fairly economical space to make use of. It is below grade for a portion, but it is, you're picking up about 3,000 plus square feet of space there at a really, really economical cost. And one of the things, as we were reviewing with city staff, is it becomes a great place for an archive, central storage area for the city on its own premises. And what involves is a new floor slab, some insulation of the walls. But it gives you essentially found space for minimal dollars and that, those minimal dollars are something like three, $400,000, gives you three, 3,000 square feet. So a hundred dollars a square foot if a new construction would be anywhere from 200 to 300 dollars a square foot for something similar. So it is an economical use of space. So option B, and it has these same extensions. There's images coming for meeting rooms and giving the public some sense that there is a rejuvenation, there is an investment in the community. It, option B does allow engineering because we are using that space in the, potentially in the basement for archives. So archives move out and it creates space elsewhere in the building where we can incorporate engineering and consolidate those services here. Option C is, is a further development of, it keeps the existing building. It's an option where in lieu of excavating the area that's directly below us or not directly two floors down from us or below where corporate services is right now, leaves that unexcavated, but builds a third floor onto the building. So instead of giving you 35, 3,000, 3,500 square feet below grade, this option gives you the same amount of space above grade built on top of the building. One of the things that we discovered, I think it was on our first visit, we were just outside taking some photographs and a gentleman came by and mentioned that, that if we, did we know that the building actually could accommodate, was designed for three floors of, for a third floor? So that, what that means is you wouldn't have to redo the structure below this, you wouldn't have to modify any of the existing structure. The columns will take the weight of the additional floor. And it was, and then we thought, well, this gentleman seemed fairly reputable. So we asked our engineers if, if that was the case. And they did an analysis and they checked out, you know, based on existing drawings and that. And in fact, the, the story that we had heard initially was true and that there is the capacity to build a third floor onto this, onto this building. What that does for you is that it gives you a fair bit of flexibility in terms of if, if we're looking at a building that's going to be, have a life cycle of 20 years of functionality, that within that 20 years, it gives you approximately 3,000 square feet of space that again, there's no defined use for it at the moment, but it, it is there at some future time where you don't have to renovate again and don't have to look at additional expansion. So there is an investment, especially if you're, we're upgrading the building potentially with new services throughout, that there is an economy of doing it at this point. And it can be used for a variety of uses. I mean, we've shown it on the, on the documents right now as potentially an executive office space, the mayor's suite could be there. It can also be used for community uses. There are, the community rooms are on this floor at this point. So it can either have an office type function or a community use function. So this option will also accommodate and consolidate the programs or the services that staff would like to see within the city hall. So these are a series of images of various portions and, and a lot of them apply to, to the entire, to all three options. This is an image of the front entrance revamped. We are looking at using local materials potentially for, for the revamping. But the main thing is to try to open it up and give a bit more light and give it a civic feel so that there isn't, so that when visitors come and, and even when the community comes that, that there is a kind of pride in place. And I think that is one of the functions of, of, of a city hall as much as providing the services that are here. And make it warm, light, inviting. This could be the service counter for corporate services, people coming in, having workstations that are ergonomic and that are accessible and make the, the community when they come in that there is a kind of more immediacy to it, that they feel a part of it. Other images of typical workstations, a reception area could be for, whether it's an executive area or a community services. But again, looking at the materiality that's warm and inviting and in the workstations, trying to open up the area so that natural light is available for everyone. Right now, when the building was built originally, it was built in very much, everybody had a cubby hole, like it was built on people having, everybody having an office. And, and, and so everyone was isolated from each other with the exception of the space below. And I think that, one of the goals of this is to make that space much more open, inviting, and give everyone sort of an equality of space, access to natural light again, finishes, good workstations. And all that, why, why that is important for staff, obviously for morale, they function better. It also helps you to retain staff. It also helps you to recruit new staff as, as, as staff retire and that. These are two images of the meeting rooms. The one on the, on my left, over, the one on my left overlooks the second avenue. So this is would be the eastern face facade of the building. They're bright, open rooms and then a more sort of ceremony, again, a meeting room that overlooks the river. And again, if you, if someone is coming in, looking at doing business with the city or looking at a potential development for the city, these are great places to show off and to showcase your, your community to, to potential business partners. So the, essentially in option A and B, the city hall would remain more or less the same except for these new meeting room additions that, that one of them fronting Second Avenue and the other one fronting the market square and the river. And would become the primary entrance to the building as well in terms of where the fire department would access the building, where the public would come, it's adjacent to the parking and that. We are also looking at incorporating a number of sustainable elements to the, to the design as well, including solar panels for power. The option C is essentially does not have the extensions that the meeting rooms on the second floor, but does have the third floor space that is wonderful space either for community use or for office use. This is from Second Avenue side, fronting the clock tower square and then fronting the market square on the other side and the river. A night shot potentially as a lantern piece for a celebration during the, during Christmas holiday season. The costs are obviously a major factor in, in reviewing all this. And I just want to try to summarize, we, what we did was we tried to build on the past reports that had been done. So we weren't starting totally from scratch. So there've been two reports that we had access to. Whoops. One is from nineteen, or from 2012. And it identified a series of improvements that needed to be made to the building, mostly in terms of the building exterior, in terms of windows, dealing with conditions of masonry deterioration. And then the second one in nineteen, in 2014 dealt with mechanical issues that had to be dealt with in terms of the servicing of the, of the mechanical systems. The mechanical systems right now are essentially 40, 50-year-old systems since the building was built. There are no controls over different areas of the building. It's one of the reasons why it's so hot in here right at the moment. There's a lack of proper air movement throughout the building in terms of ventilation and that. So that study identified a number of things to, to revamp the mechanical system. That came to, if you combine, there's a, some, the odd thing that overlaps, but essentially they're somewhat distinct. So they came to a cost of approximately 30, $3,200,000. What they, what those costs didn't do, they were isolated costs as best we could see. They didn't deal with a contractor coming in and actually taking charge with overhead and sort of administrating and, and coordinating the construction portion of it. So they didn't take their fees into account in terms of their costs. It also didn't allow for any contingency. So if, working through the system, that, that something undiscovered and could well happen because the walls and that were opened up. So we applied a 10% contingency to both of those things. And that got us, provided a figure of just under $4 million in terms of dealing with things that needed to be dealt with immediately. So it dealt, it didn't deal with the issue of the hydro vault, it didn't deal with the issues of AODA. It didn't, that 4 million, it dealt with things kind of in an isolated way. So it allowed for an X number of dollars for a mechanical, new mechanical rooftop unit. But what it, or it allowed for piping. But what it didn't allow for is in doing the new piping, you also have to access the piping in existing malls. So you have to take those walls apart and then rebuild that. So there is a cost. So there's a whole series of, the things were looked at in a little bit in isolation and instead of holistically, in terms of all the things that would be required of, to upgrade a certain function. So the study that, in going through it, it also didn't address the AODA requirements, which, for instance, the elevator, the cost of a new elevator, didn't deal with the issue of the exiting for a new exits there. It also didn't have anything to do with any of the servicing or the, the functionality of the building in terms of the services that are offered and how best those services are offered to the public. So again, it looked at things in isolation. So we think, based on the process since we done, have done, there is another approximately $2 million in addressing those issues. That brings us to a kind of base renovation cost of just under $6 million. That $6 million is also consistent with one of those reports, there is a line, and I think it's the MHPM report that identifies also, if you're going to do the building and just upgrade the basics, never mind adding and that, that you're probably looking at a $6 million project. So the report that we've done is also consistent with past reports. So there is some kind of consensus amongst consultants that, that just to, to get the building upgraded, we're looking at $6 million. These are construction costs too. So in the options that we've identified and went through, option A is obviously the base building. It doesn't deal with certain programming and servicing issues and consolidation issues of staff and offering those services to the public. For instance, engineering, if, if I was a developer coming into the, into the city and looking to develop a piece of property and want access to engineering and building department and development and planning, I would have to go to multiple locations. And here it becomes a one-stop shopping situation where it just makes servicing for potential business partners that much easier. So the cost of the, in option A, we get a, a base building, to renovate the building of just under $6 million. Option B, which incorporates the, the new storage area below where corporate services now, gives you that 3,500 approximately square feet of space. It is below grade, but it does give you that for approximately $400,000. And then option C, with the third floor addition, the cost of that is $7,200,000. We also did a quick comparison to what, you know, just to compare apples to apples so that you have that information, is a new building would cost just under $10 million. So the $10 million and, and the size of the building would be comparable to C. So if you're comparing apples to apples, C and a new building, the, the cost difference is approximately $2.5 million. So that is the savings that we feel, the benefits of, economic benefits of remaining on this site with this building and reworking this building. And essentially giving you a new building, it would have all the bells and whistles of a new building. It just wouldn't be entirely new in terms of, you know, the outside. But we think it is important that there is some continuity, there is some historic value to the building. That, and also there's significant savings. In addition to the structure, the, the construction costs, which is identified in this line, there are a series of additional costs that in any construction redevelopment project, you know, it's prudent to carry a contingency. We've identified 77% for all these. It's important to identify, you know, furnishings and equipment, relocation costs and moving costs, the cost of the HST prior to rebates. So it gives you a series of total project costs from approximately 8 million, just under 8 million, to 8.5 million, to 9.5 million for the three options. And if we were carrying that over to a new building, whoops, it would be approximately just under 12.5 million. So where, we started in November in terms of the schedule and, and working with staff in terms of making sure that the planning work, the fits worked within the options, understanding what those options are, making sure that city staff understood those options. So we are, we've finished the programming, conceptual design. We're right now, I guess, working with you and presenting to you the options that, for, which of the options would be the one that best suited the needs of the city. And then there's a series of things afterwards. We feel that the development of the project in terms of getting it to tender and getting pricing from a contractor would take approximately six months. So in the fall, that, that the construction documents would be completed, in the fall, we would pre-qualify contractors for the project to ensure that they had the capacity and the capability to do the project with the intent of awarding a contract in January of 2017. Construction start doesn't have to happen immediately. In fact, staff doesn't need to move out until probably April. What those three or four months do is allow a contractor to get themselves activated. There's a whole series of procedures in terms of shop drawings and preparation and getting subcontracts all in line. And what the end result is that it gives you an occupancy based on this one scenario of 2018. And again, this is one scenario, we just, we were just asked to put together timelines in terms of, you know, if the project were to continue, when would the, when would a final project be delivered to the community? Thank you.
Good, thank you. Questions, counsel? Any right now? Counselor Lemon?
Well, my first question is, I see in May, the confirmation of existing foundation, letting depth, confirmation of soil bearing capacity. None of that's been done yet.
No. So that's one of the reasons.
So basically, option, the third option you gave is completely, at this point, we don't know whether that's doable or not.
No, we know that it is doable. We know that there is the capacity based on existing information that we have, that it's on existing drawings. We know that, that what that May, confirmation of existing footings actually refers to the space that's immediately below corporate services that has, where the structure has been built down and it's been backfilled. But we haven't actually excavated to make sure that those footings are where the drawings say those footings are. Based on the preliminary information that we have and our structural having a look at it, we do believe that it is there. But it is something that needs to be confirmed and hasn't been confirmed yet.
Okay, the drawings you are referring to, are those as built or are they? Okay, the drawings you are referring to, are those as-built or designed?
We believe those were more, as-built. So they would, they were construction drawings that were issued to a contractor.
Okay. The other question I've got, and this is what scares me a lot. When you start getting into renovations of a building, albeit a home, an office building or a city hall, there are things that we don't know about. For instance, one thing you haven't mentioned here is the asbestos that I believe is still in this building and its remediation cost.
Right.
But there may be other things that we don't know about.
Yeah, some of that, we've, with, we have taken those into account. We've also taken into account a contingency that is part of the base construction cost. It's not part of that 7% contingency. That does allow for hidden things that we would do destructive sort of investigation on. We would check to make sure, prior to it going out for a bid by a contractor, we would do all that due diligence to make sure that we have covered everything off. We do have a preliminary report on hazardous materials for the building. We recognize that there are, we believe that there's some additional ones beyond that report, given how the wording of the report goes. So we have taken those into account and that is why we are still carrying a contingency within those base numbers of 10%. The one thing I would say is that we've allowed sort of a period of six months to do contract documents that allow us and consultants to fully investigate the building to make sure that we have as much covered off as possible in terms of, of potential costs and things. I know exactly what you're saying. A lot of our work, in fact, is renovation work. And that, that is a key aspect of it, is to make sure, to do the onsite investigation of everything. The preliminary part at the beginning, before you actually start on the contract, drawings that are for the contractor, that you thoroughly investigate all the conditions within, within the existing building. Because they form the basis of how good the drawings are down the road. And the more you know about the building, and it's exactly what you're saying, the better off you are and more, the better, you're in a much better position to control costs. The other thing that is significant, we have allowed in the pricing is new piping throughout, new electrical units. So we're not saving things. We're not trying to tie into existing conditions where things don't fit properly. They don't mesh because they're 40 years difference. If you, if, if everything is, you know, the piping is all new, the engineers will draw it out as new piping. The contractor doesn't have to worry about trying to make something fit or finding a pipe that's not there because the new routing is all defined. And that's a really important thing. And I can give you lots of examples from our experience. We had a situation, well, we've done a lot of renovations. We renovated a building of the same era, a little bit older for WSIB. It was 300, 300 and some odd thousand square feet. And it was 60 years old at the time. And one of the things we found is that, and it was very quick in terms of having to perform the work because of funding issues. But you do find things when you don't investigate, you'll find that, and we were trying to, and save money, that was the mandate from our client, where you keep as much of the existing as possible. And what we were finding was, you'd come across a steam line in this big building and instead of, and within the steam lines, there would be a shut-off valve. Well, there were so many steam lines and the shut-off valves, there wasn't just one shut-off valve, there'd be like 20 shut-off valves. And what happened is these shut-off valves would, are old, so they've rusted, they don't function, so you couldn't in fact shut them off. So they all had to be replaced. So one of the things, especially in a project that isn't very big like this one, you are better off to replace as much as possible, not try to worry, you know, it's, it's, it's sort of a penny wise, pound foolish thing, that it is actually in the long run cheaper to make good completely than try to retrofit, you know, mechanical system. It's a different thing with building structures and the building envelope. Those are things that are easily defined. But it's usually the mechanical systems and the electrical systems, if you start to try to patch things together, that, those are the things that, that potentially can lead to additional costs.
Yeah, I just noticed the costs between.
Gonna keep moving here, Peters?
Yeah. The cost for a new building compared to the cost of renovation per square foot, isn't that different?
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of questions. At the grade level, are there accommodations for public washrooms?
No. One of the things that, within these, the thought was that the public washrooms would be relocated to the market building.
Okay.
And there were issues of security and that related to this building, but it was deemed by, you know, talking, working with staff that potentially that that was a better location.
Okay. And the glassed-in areas that are being proposed as either meeting rooms or a third level, can you tell me their weather tolerance to heat and cold? Because I know the windows here have a film on them now. Will they be tinted or?
Yeah.
How do you insulate those?
Even the, the windows on, within this building would all be replaced as well within the cost that we've identified. So they would have tinting that's built into the window construction and films that are built in. So if you're, for instance, on a side that gets more sun, you can add a film that's not visible and it doesn't have all that crackly effect that, where, you know, you try to make good something. So it doesn't look old and yellow and stuff like that. So the performance of those buildings, of those areas would be equal to any building around. We did a, a project that we did a number of years ago was a library project in Hesler, which is basically, there was an existing building and we built a new building around it. It was all out of glass. And through a whole series of mechanical, how the mechanical system worked in terms of dealing with heat and light, that building actually uses less energy than the original building, even though it's twice the size. And it all had to do with being creative about how you deal with excess heat. Instead of throwing it out, you reuse it as part of the heating system for the building. There's a whole series of things like that. So the materiality is one thing, but it's really how you make a building work as a kind of holistic thing that takes into account mechanical, electrical, structural, everything as a kind of integrated unit that allows you to make a building that performs at a high, very high level and, and sustainable.
Okay. And one more, the proposal for moving out and moving back in is 17 to 18 months. Is that normal? That seems like a long time to me.
Well, the move, we think, we think there is more than a year of construction. And one of the benef, which could be 14 months or 15 months. But one of the things is that there's also, in fact, the move-in date back into the building would actually, by staff and getting the building set up and refined and making sure the staff understands the mechanical system so that they can be maintained, is actually two months earlier than, than the public, you know, coming into the building. So the construction period that we've identified, in fact, onsite would be approximately 14 months. This is also the issue, you know, I mean, one of the advantages of actually retrofitting is you're not also, because you've got a shell. It is also a bit easier to control the schedule in terms of inclement weather and that as well.
Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, your worship. So you're dealing with asbestos and mold, you're replacing piping, wiring, HVAC, everything is being completely replaced.
Yes.
So give me an example of something that's unforeseen.
We haven't, well, we've identified a couple of things with the footing issues below this building. We do believe there's potentially a bit more asbestos in the building that's been identified in terms of, of the reports that we have. And again, one of the reasons why that is, because they were going in, the, the original studies were going in and they were doing it again, kind of individually, like if we replace this heating unit, we got to change these pipes here. And they would go, well, we have to change the elbow that had asbestos on it. But in fact, you'd have to change more than that. So there are, there are things like asbestos that we've accounted for within a contingency built into those numbers. But essentially, I think that is one of the things, if you do deal with the building and kind of give it a clean slate, like take out all the existing systems, the chances of running into cost overruns, there, there might always be something that's hidden. But they're going to be controlled and they're going to be limited and they're certainly going to be within acceptable standards, whether it's, you know, new construction or, or renovation. We do, I mean, one of the things that we do pride ourselves on is a really good set of coordinated drawings.
Okay, and I sat on the ad hoc committee and I think the way we left it, we were, we had kind of hoped for like a staging renovation. At what point was that abandoned? Where we could just renovate one floor at a time?
Well, it's difficult to do to address the, all the issues of the base building because they're not isolated to a floor. For instance, the issue of washrooms. You can renovate, you can, you can obviously renovate one floor at a time, but then the piping still has to run through the building to the lower level. Or a situation where, for instance, the elevator issue. The elevator, you cannot just, you can't renovate, renovate or retrofit the existing elevator where it is because of the size of the elevator. So you have to reposition it somewhere. The new elevator will run through all floors of the building. So again, I think one of the misleading things partially in some of the original studies that were done, they didn't consider the building as a whole in terms of thinking that you can just do a piece of it at a time. But you will have a new, you know, new mechanical systems that'll run throughout the building. And, and those systems will, to make them functional in terms of, you know, take a mechanical system where you also have to provide return air to it. So if a, if a unit is servicing that whole wing and you're only making a function for half the wing for another year and then not using it for the other part, the unit also isn't performing as it needs to perform in terms of return air. So there, if this was a much bigger building and a more complex building, I would say that it was more feasible to do it. But given the size of the building and given how, the, the amount of work that needs to be done, it becomes much more difficult to do a kind of phasing approach to the building. I'm not saying it's not impossible, but it would certainly be very disruptive and probably more disruptive over a longer period of time in terms of, you know, servicing to the public. But I'm not saying that it's not possible.
Okay, and last question. Option C is adding a third floor, correct?
Yes.
So how do you add a third floor and have less square footage than Plan B? Or am I reading this wrong?
No, you're not. So Plan B, I'll just go back.
You had it there.
Yeah, I'll just go back to the floor plans. So the area that we identify in Option B includes the area that's under corporate services, so it includes this area here. That area, which is below where corporate services is right now.
Right.
And that's about 3,500 square feet.
Right.
Then when you come to Option C, the equivalent area is the area that would be part of the third floor. And that area is actually slightly less than the basement, that area that would be at the basement level. So if you take all the usable area within the building, Option B potentially does have fractionally more square footage, but it just becomes, because we're using that space in the basement and, and that happens to be larger than the third floor addition. The third floor addition is dictated by, whoops, by where the columns and the structure run through the building so that when we're tying things together, that we're directly connecting to the column. So we're using the existing systems as much as possible. But it is, this has been checked out by both our cost consultants and our sales and computer. It's just one of those, I know what you're saying and you're thinking, but in fact, it's just because that area in the basement or potential use of that area in the basement is slightly larger than the addition on the third floor. That's why there's a discrepancy. Does that?
Well, I, no, I don't understand that. So if you're adding the third floor, you're not, you're not using the part underneath the corporate service?
Yes, correct. Yes. That we wouldn't excavate that under this scenario. And that's only because we were putting together three distinct options. Like, like between the three options, A, B, and C, you can go, well, I can take, I would like a piece of this, incorporate a piece of this, still, like for instance, in C, you could have that basement area as well, plus the third floor addition. It would give you an additional 3,500 square feet. So instead of having a building that's approximately 25,000 square feet, you would have 28,500 square feet. The cost would, but the cost would increase prior approximately $400,000. So these are, these are, these are kind of like a menu where, where you can kind of pick and choose where, which parts. But what we wanted to do is provide, you know, if you were adding, if you're increasing the building by 3,500 square feet, you could either have it as sort of lower level space, essentially basement type space, which has a functional and it's very cheap, or you can build, the third floor addition gives you prime office space. But it's just a matter of.
We can, we can debate that at another time, but I just don't see the point. If the space is already there in the basement and all we have to do is pump it up, we better be using it before we add another floor, but that's for another.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, that's basically what Option B is saying, that, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
Could I just ask how long this will extend the life of the building? If we take Option A, B, or C?
20 to 25 years.
And if we went for a new build, how long will the lifespan of that building be?
Approximately the same. Because we're essentially providing all new services, right? We're retrofitting the exterior wall conditions, we're providing all new windows. The quality of windows that we would have in the retrofit would be identical to the quality of the windows in the new building. The quality of the mechanical systems would be exactly the same as in a new building. The quality of the electrical, new lighting would be exactly the same. There would be no difference in terms of the technical aspects because you're using materials and a, you know, sort of the technology that's present today, and we're going to use the latest, whether it's, would be a new building or this building. So I, as odd as that may sound to, it's true.
Thank you.
If I can, if I can jump in, just following up on that. And this building is built 51 years ago. What was the life expectancy then? 51 years and more like 2025?
No, it, like, it's, like, if you, it, it's a good point. It's different. Like, when people looked at a building, when they built a building in 1965, they thought buildings generally last forever. And what they didn't appreciate is how technology changes or how, or what they were doing in terms of the building sciences. They didn't worry about energy costs. They didn't worry about insulating a building at that point because it was, because energy was, was cheap, right? So they didn't pay attention to those things. And also, technology is increasing. Like, it's, it's a cellphone or a computer or anything, right? You buy one, a year later, it's 10 times better than the one before. But theoretically, what you're trying to put in place, you're not going to build a new building every year, but a kind of industry standard is a 20 or 25 year at this point in time is a reasonable expectation of a, a building that is still current, it's still, you know, energy efficient, it'll, it'll service, it'll provide the functions that you want it to provide. I mean, the main reason for the building is to service the public. And if you can service the public within an economical building that, that is sustainable, that is current, that has all the same features that a new building and is cheaper, it, there is some value to that.
Good, thank you. Counselor Gregg?
I guess further to that, that was going to be my lead question as well, is I couldn't believe that it's a 20-year plan. So let's use downtown Toronto in, as context here. What standards is a 60-story condominium built to? It's not built to 20 years.
No. No, but they, what they, it's, they, a condominium is a slightly, you got to compare apples to apples. So you have to compare an institutional building to an institutional building. A condominium is also based, it's more economically built, it's kind of. A condominium is also based, it, it's more economically built, kind of a kind word, than, than say, an institutional building where they budget in, that's why your condo fees are so high. And that's why you're paying $1,400 a month because you know that those windows have to be recocked in five years because they use the cheapest product or going. So if, if you're comparing an institutional building, a municipal building to a municipal building, in any community, it would be the same. If you go, you know, an industrial building is different than a municipal building and a condo building is different than a municipal building. So there is, like Toronto City Hall is undergoing, is a building of almost the same vintage as this and is actually undergoing the same types of retrofit. All the windows are being replaced. There's insulation being put. There's new services being put throughout. I, buildings tend to have, they're, they, there's.
Okay. I believe you've got some hospital designs in your portfolio, correct?
We've.
Is there some hospital?
We've, we've worked on a hospital with Godfrey, yes.
What would be the life duration of those plans for a hospital?
They're approximately the same, but, but what happens in hospitals, they're, like, every building type is different, like, because the services vary and the technologies vary. For instance, in a hospital, you will have, you can lay it out right now, five years, or five years down the road, you get a new imaging machine. And that imaging machine will operate differently than the old imaging machine. It means that you have to renovate a series of rooms to accommodate that, or the power requirements are different, or the conditioning requirements are different for it. So it's always important to compare apples to apples in terms of building types. But a hospital, the basic hospital, I mean, that's one of the reasons why the Ontario government right now is spending a great deal of money on hospitals, is to try to extend the major capital cost for a period of 20 to 25 years. Because all the hospitals that were built in the 50s and the 60s have now, as with this building, have come to the end of their sort of serviceable life where the renovation cost. And it's not just, like, there's a whole series of functional issues. Municipal buildings are much more consistent in terms of use, right? Like, the, the functions that are here today, like a tax function, or road function, or planning function, will always be somewhat the same 20 years down the road. So you don't have that flux and change of, like, how things get combined may change, but the functional, the basic services change. Technology, buildings like hospitals are totally, they change differently because they're different.
The use of this building would be very static. Has been static, will be static.
Yes.
Moving forward.
Right.
Second question. Why is this renovation being deemed to be in compliance with a post-disaster relief building? Because we have a police station and a fire hall right now that operate as a emergency management center. And what would the cost, what's the extra cost of that being in the design?
We were, like, as answer to the first part, we were asked by staff to have a consideration of what if it was a post-disaster relief building. So we looked at it because we were asked to look at it. There's obviously a planning rationale for that. The second part of that question is that when we looked at it, what we found was when we asked structural, we asked for mechanical and electrical, what were the issues or what were the cost add-ons to that? They were, the structural found that there wasn't enough, I mentioned it before, lateral bracing of the building to withstand, say, a strong wind hurricane condition or a tornado condition. And so by, but by the placement of the elevator core and the new stair, which you would have to do anyway, would stabilize that and give you the, the post-disaster relief building by default. There wouldn't be any additional monies. It's just using one object, one piece of the building to do several functions. So it stabilizes the building, it gives you the AOD requirements, and it gives you the post-disaster. But even if the building wasn't post-disaster, you would still have to do the elevator core in almost the same way.
Okay. And last question. And not to put you on the spot a little bit here, but can you give us a price estimate versus actual on your last three design jobs? Just for market conditions, cost overruns, or did they come in less?
They came in less. I'll give you, we, we finished a building a couple of years ago, a sort of major building for University of Toronto. That building actually came in under the client's budget by several hundred thousand dollars. It was a $25 million building. And that included changes by the client during the construction period. One of the reasons why we're able to, we're able to control it as well as, the building was originally designed as steel, as a steel building. We found that steel prices were escalating. Before the project got too far along, we converted the concrete and saved money. So we're very proactive and conscious as we move through the design process, both in terms of trends within, pricing trends of products and that we give you the best benefit in terms of the cost. A project for, at a major renovation at University of Guelph, a residence that was actually built at the same time project, that was a little bit bigger than this one. It came in with, with a construction contingency of less than 10%, and that was based on the owner adding significantly more scope to the, to the work as well. So again, it goes back to the point, like, you, you need to investigate the existing conditions. You need to pin those down as much as possible. It is like, it is, it is, you have to learn how to walk before you run and the, the walking part is documenting the existing building. And the more thoroughly you do that, the more chances, you know, the, the better the cost control will be.
Thank you. To go to Deputy Mayor Wright and if she can wrap it up.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of things. I'm assuming that if we went with the Plan B, the third floor could be added at a later date?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not too worried about the years. I believe in 25 years, we, this place is going to look altogether different. We may be one, we may be, who knows what Owensound will look like? It could be the, the single municipality of Owensound including everything. Who knows? We don't know. We can hope, but we don't know. And the only other question I have is improved access to natural light and ventilation means windows open?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Good. Very, very quickly.
You said something, all kinds of alarm bells were off. We're not going to change the washrooms and make them accessible in this building outside?
We have, we, we are proposing that the washrooms that are, the, the washrooms that are exterior, that are accessible from the exterior on the west side.
Yes.
Where above, where the hydro vault is, would be relocated from the city hall so that they would become part of the market function. And that, there's, there's a couple of reasons for doing that. One is that it gives you more flexibility in terms of how you lay out the space on the ground floor where, where it's a major floor in terms of public accessibility, in terms of service and getting all the, you know, the community services working with the building department working and engineering working on that one floor level. The, the washrooms take up a significant block of space and block access to natural light in that. I know the, I know there's been a, there's a history of it. I know there, you know, it's dear to a lot of people in terms of having those washrooms there. But also, it does impact on the flexibility and how you can make the city hall, that space, that floor level function better because it is prime space. And, and also the other thing that in, sort of with staff, there has been some concerns that it's also security issues of people having access to those washrooms and theoretically being able to get into the building from those washrooms because they're not supervised and monitored, right? And you can't mon, you can't put a closed circuit TV in there. So there's a whole, well, there's a whole series of things. I, I know that we, the, the feeling was that there was a more appropriate location and it would give you the benefit of having better space within the building for staff and the primary service functions that you are providing the public.
So I'm sure that's one of those things that we'll be looking at as we look at everything going forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, again, again, that's.
Good. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think we've asked as many questions and we'll probably think of a whole bunch more. Hopefully at 2:00 in the morning, you'll take our call when, you know, the questions pop up.
Sure, not a problem. I know, it's a lot of information to take in.
Mr. Ritchie's got a report on it that comes up a little bit later, so thank you again.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we're at number nine, public question period, and I'm just wondering if anyone wants to leave now after the deputations. This might be a good time to, to sneak out. So in that process, public question period, anyone wish to ask counsel a question? Seeing nobody moving quickly enough from the, from the back row there. Oh, there is one. No? Oh, there is one. Okay, sorry. I was looking in the wrong direction. Welcome. I'll get you to state your name, address, and go ahead and ask your question.
Good evening. My name's Alex Marsh. I live at 688 11th Street West in Owensound. I was here at the last meeting and I was a little unprepared. I just found out at the previous day that the ATV rules had changed since December. I was away in January and February. Do you have time? Because this is like 10 minutes.
No.
Okay.
No, this is strictly a question period, just to ask a question. It's not for really input. If you have something that is written down that you want to send to staff to review or to, to a committee to review, then if you put it into a letter and send it to Attention... Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, Jeff Smith, then it will be looked at.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 10 is correspondence received for which direction of counsel is required. We have correspondence of the board chair from the Tom Thompson Art Gallery expressing an interest in the former courthouse and jail. Counselor Dodd.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm sure as we all know and past councils have known that this building has been up for sale for quite some time and hard time to try to, try to find a home for it. I would make a recommendation that we approve in principle the request by, by the board chair, Lynn Miles-Gallagher, that we ask staff to put together a report and work along with the, the board to come along with the proposal.
So it would come back from Mr. Ritchie with sort of flushed out of what the, what the agreement might be?
What the agreement would be, what the pricing of it would be, and at that time it would give them the due diligence to find out if that building is actually meant for them.
Mr. Smith, you got that motion?
Your Worship, could you ask the mover to say it one more time?
I would make a motion that we approve in principle the request to allow the art gallery board to look further and do their due diligence regarding the courthouse and jail. And upon that, we'd come back to counsel. Does that make sense? No? Yeah? No?
I wonder if that's a step too far.
You can, you can back me up wherever you want.
Anyone else want to take a turn? We, we know, we know what you want to do. We just want to make sure that we don't over, I think you got the horse a little bit before the car.
If I could, Your Worship, I see the board chair as well as the curator are here. Perhaps they could tell us exactly what it was they were hoping to achieve tonight and we could move from, from that perspective if you don't mind.
That might be easier.
What we would like to do.
Get you to push the button so we can hear you.
We are requesting a, basically a meeting with you to see if we can come to an agreement over the courthouse. We're interested. We need to see if we can move forward with an agreement.
So isn't that something that we should be asking staff to meet and come up with, whatever the terms that would be presented back to counsel to be reviewed and approved or not approved, or?
You're looking at me?
I'm, I'm hearing yes is coming.
Okay, if you're looking at me, then yes, that's, that's kind of what, that's, sorry. That's where I would like to go. We'll make a motion to direct staff to work with the board on coming up with an agreement to bring back to counsel. Does that make more sense?
Good with you, Mr. Smith? Yeah, okay. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Next matter is 10B, correspondence from Chief Librarian Owensound North Gray Union Library, requesting counsel, respecting library flooring. Counselor Thomas, I'd like.
Speak to that, Your Worship, as I was library board chair at the time all this happened, probably four to five years ago. Basically, the request is to move forward $50,000 that had been originally approved under the city's capital budget. Gosh, it's got to be four, five years ago now anyway, because you were still meeting up at the Gray County Building at that time. And at that time, we had the thought that there might be a renovation of the main floor, so we held off on putting in new carpet to wait and see if there was going to be a renovation. In the meantime, lots has changed at the library. We've been addressing some of our concerns in a very meaningful way and in the meantime, the carpet has been removed. The floor has been painted, which has met with mixed success, but it is taking a lot of staff time. And so at this time, we would like to move forward with re-carpeting the main floor of the library.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the.
I'd move the recommendation.
It's in the report. Discussion, questions? Counselor McManaman?
A couple of questions. Maybe Mr. Ritchie can help me with this. The 50,000 that's in that reserve, and I guess I should have, it was only four years ago, I should remember, but how did it get, how did the 50,000 get in the reserve? Is that strictly came stream from the capital budget process?
Actually, Your Worship, I'll let Ms. Allen speak to this issue. It's a finance issue.
Through you, through your worship, $50,000 was set up in the 2013 capital budget, so it would have been in the fall of 2012 that those discussions took place. They weren't spent, or I believe the intention at the time, going by my memory, was to start to build that up a certain amount every year until you had enough to undertake a complete renovation. That was the first installment, 50,000. It didn't get spent. Future contributions didn't necessarily happen to that specific project, so that 50,000 has been sitting there since the end of 2013.
Okay. Counselor McManaman?
And it, my recollection is that, and I'm, and I, I agree that the, the painted floor has met with mixed success. I think that's a good way of putting it. So I'm in favor of, of doing something. Part of the union library agreement also talks about operating capital and there's a, I think it's $20,000 that the, that our partners also contribute to in the, in the regular budget. So is it, and I, you probably don't have, you wouldn't have an estimate yet, but is it the intent that this 50 and, and the 20 from that would pay for this? Or how, like, does this 50 pay for it all, or does, do our partners have to kick in a certain share to see what I'm?
I do. At this point, we don't have an estimate. We're just asking counsel to free up that money so that we can use it for this purpose. Certainly, we'll be inviting our union partners to make their contributions as per the union agreement.
Counselor O'Larry?
I just wanted to ask if this is, if this is the right procedure? Like, should we not have an estimate already so that you're coming asking for $43,700? Or do we know that $50,000 is going to cover it?
Going to let Mr. Ritchie answer that?
Certainly with counsel's approval, this will go through the normal city purchasing procurement, so there will certainly be bids obtained and counsel will be fully informed of exactly what the cost is for all of this. So this is the start of the process, not the end, Your Worship.
Thank you.
So clearly, the wording is just to make available to purchase and install. It doesn't necessarily say they're going to spend it all. Okay, I'm going to call the question on favor.
Yes.
That is carried. Good, thank you. Next is correspondence from Crime Stoppers. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to move approval of the, a letter going to Crime Stoppers to support their efforts in obtaining a grant for signage around the city. So it would be under the mayor's signature.
Questions, Deputy Mayor Wright?
Thank you. I, I, what type of signs? It doesn't say what kind of signs they are, and it doesn't say where they want to put them. It just says to support them getting these signs and installing them. Do we have any further information on any of this, Your Worship?
Ms. Colter?
Through you, Worship, I'm not certain the type of signs that are proposed, but perhaps as a caveat to the recommendation, you could just say in accordance with the provisions or in compliance with the provisions of the city's sign by law.
Okay. Counselor Kepke?
That's fine to add that in. I did speak with Kathy Coburn. I did speak with Kathy Coburn, and they're the normal signs that you see around other municipalities about Crime Stoppers and the phone number, similar to what MAD has with their signs, and they are working with the police as well to get a letter of support from the police, and they will be complying with the sign bylaws.
Okay.
So, with that, with the motion, with that added...
Get you to push the button so we can...
Sorry, so, I, did you put a motion on the floor? Would you please add that the signs...
Yes, I follow our sign bylaw.
I'll add that, yes. Thank you.
Counselor O'Leary?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say one of the signs will say, "Crime doesn't pay, Crime Stoppers does."
Wow! You've got it memorized, okay, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? That is carried. Now, I note that they need it by May 4th to submit their request, which is Wednesday, so we'll have to get that signed tomorrow night, thanks. Number 11, reports. Mr. Ritchie, divestiture phase of the port's asset transfer program.
Thank you, your worship. This will allow us to move forward with Transport Canada, passing information back and forth on the possible divestiture of the port. It will begin that process. I have had some preliminary introductory talks with Transport Canada, I can tell you they are interested in moving this along, as are we. The mayor and I met with representatives of the local First Nations leaders, and that was on Friday, I believe we had a very good introductory meeting, certainly so that we could understand all of their interests in the port as they see them, and they could understand certainly through his worship, the city's interests. I believe for the community as a whole, we need to certainly look at seeing if divestiture is possible without too much risk on the city taxpayer. It's certainly been on the agenda of councils for well over a decade, and I do believe moving ahead for the next six months, we will certainly work to see that if it's possible, we will undertake it. If it's not possible, as much as we're allowed to tell the community after signing this agreement, we certainly looked at all of the options, and we did not feel it was in the best interest of the city of One Sound. We have applied for funding through Transport Canada to bring in the experts, we need to do our due diligence. One thing I have certainly found out, I know his worship will support me on this, running a port is certainly something with which we currently do not have the expertise in-house on staff. We need to understand exactly what that is moving forward, as well as the environmental issues. So, at the moment, Transport Canada has put the whole process on hold with their timelines till they receive funding and can pass it on to us, but this document tonight will at least get us discussing issues with Transport Canada, your worship.
Okay, so, recommendation is there. Counselor Thomas?
I'll move the recommendation.
Questions? Any other comments? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. I wonder if at some point we talked way around this, and it just dropped into my head right now, so I'll say it. If we shouldn't be looking at becoming a member of the Marine Chamber of Commerce and what that entails, because I know there are great benefit to Georgian College looking at what they did, so, there may be, there may be some help there.
I can look into it, your worship, and report back to council.
Thank you. Number two, also from City Manager, conceptual design renovations for City Hall.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks to Mr. Congatz for his presentation. I'll be somewhat brief, because I certainly know he covered many of the issues. City Hall was constructed in 1965, and over the last 51 years has gone some cosmetic alterations. We have two building condition assessments, I have copies of them here, as well as the work undertaken by contacts detailing that the infrastructure of this building is well beyond its useful life. To be brief, the heating, cooling, electrical, and plumbing systems are at the point they regularly do not function. The building perimeter below and above grade is porous. With any significant rainfall, there are water leaks on all levels of the building. Over time, these have led to deterioration in the walls, flooring, and ceilings. It is not uncommon to see water trickling down the interior walls or a large water spot in any of the perimeter offices of this building. I want to commend City Hall staff who have plugged in heaters in the winter and fans in the summer over many years now, and have moved their workspace if needed so that it could avoid water damage. Council appointed an ad hoc committee to look at the building and come up with a plan. That has led council to decision to upgrade on the current site on the presentation that you heard this evening. The estimate to build a new City Hall is $12.4 million. The recommended option B has an estimated cost of $8.3 million. This option would extend the life of the building for 20 years, accommodate all administrative staff within City Hall, comply with the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, or AODA, provide modern, environmentally friendly, and efficient workspace for staff, provide a welcoming environment for the public as well as public space for hosting civic functions and receptions. When major capital assets reach the end of their life cycle, replacement requires significant investment of public funds. City Hall is an important capital asset that is at the end of its useful life cycle. Council has done its due diligence to ensure the replacement of this asset is required and will meet the needs of the corporation today and in the future. Certainly, your worship, the project team realizes we worked through this project with Congatz, it is a significant investment of public funds. I wish I could tell you that it would be less, but working very much from the premise, as Alar mentioned, of what does the building serve the public, how does it serve the staff, and not getting overwhelmed with trying to bring it in on a certain budget number to make sure it was going to provide the functions to the community for the next 20 years, this is where we've arrived. The project team, after, you know, some discussion, arrived at option B as the one we put forward to council, and we are certainly open to answering any questions council may have this evening or at any time, your worship.
Thank you, questions? Deputy Mayor Ray?
I, I'm going to have a lot of questions, but I want to ask one thing. We, there was a team put together, I'm not sure who sat on it, Counselor O'Leary, Counselor, and who else?
Kepke.
And Counselor McManaman. So, I'm asking, did you meet with, like, it says down at the bottom, consultation, it doesn't say any counselors' names on there. Did the counselors, were they not involved in this, in putting this plan together?
They were involved, your worship, through you making the decision that certainly we needed to move to bringing in an architectural firm to help us with a renovation on site of City Hall. They have not been involved in the actual design process, that's where we're at today with these three options. The project team included all of senior management, along with Kristen Schreider, and I guess that was the team, as I... And Peter Allen Parker as well, your worship. So, that's how we've arrived at where we are today. We have had input from all of staff.
But you haven't had any input from the counselors?
That's correct.
Just to be clear, the ad hoc committee at the time was set up to recommend an architect, and it was to go that far, we've completed our mandate, so...
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, the ad hoc committee was not set up to go further at that time.
Well, that's too bad, because I really would have felt much better had some, had some counselors been, had some involvement in all this, because I'm certainly not anywhere near prepared to make any decision on that right now. Thank you.
Counselor O'Leary?
Well, I did say that, you know, if I had to do this over again, we would have had the ad hoc committee sit through all of this with staff. You know, my thoughts at the beginning were, you know, the city manager's going to have a handle on where he wants everyone and the, you know, how it's designed and that sort of thing. But I still think counselors should have been involved in terms of how far we're going to go. So, I think, and the other thing I want to mention, too, we can't ignore this anymore. Like, this, this building is in such bad shape, we owe it to the, to the employees in this building to do something finally. It's been totally ignored for, from previous counselors or councils, and, and it just can't wait any longer. So, I, I think we at least made that decision at the ad hoc committee. But now that I've read this, and I read the entire thing, and I'm, it's overwhelming for me. Like, I just, I can't speak for all of council, but there's just so much there, and even in the presentation, you know, it was mentioned, there's a lot of information there. I feel that we should table this and send it back to the ad hoc committee. I'm not sure of the process, do we even have an ad hoc committee anymore, or do we have to do that again?
We'll figure that out in a second.
But I think it should go back to the ad hoc committee, and we dissect these three options, and, and, you know, it's, at the end of the day, we're making the decision. So, at least now we know what staff are looking for, there's an awful lot of information in there, but I don't think any of us are prepared to step up and make a decision tonight.
Just before we go to motions, Counselor Lemon?
Yes, your worship, I strongly will support it going back to the committee, because counselors from the end of the ad hoc committee till now have had no input, and there's a couple of things I would like to see included. I'm not sure of all the answers we got, but I would like to get some clarification on a number of matters, and I think that that is the appropriate action to take, and I certainly will support it going back to the ad hoc committee for further discussion. I agree we have to improve this building, and I've said that many times. I want to make sure that we do it wisely and not make any major errors.
Thank you, Counselor McManaman?
Thank you, worship. There is one thing I think we all agree on and need to agree on, and the community, more importantly, needs to agree on. This building needs major renovation, needs major work. We can discuss what that is or what that should be, that's a discussion, I think there's probably a motion coming here somewhere, but there's no insulation in the building, the windows are single pane, the plumbing, heating, and air conditioning systems are in poor condition and break down on a frequent basis. Now, just think about that for a minute, the plumbing, heating, and air conditioning don't work properly. There's mold issues, there's leak issues, you don't have to be any sort of expert to walk around the outside of this building and see the structural issues with the brick as Mr. Congatz pointed out. So, I, I too have some concerns, but I think what we have to, the message we, we can no longer, what's the, kick this can down the road. And I was, I'm not trying to lay blame on anyone, I was part of councils that did that too, because of the money and because of the perception. But we have to get beyond that and get to the point where things have to be done. So, I mean, those are, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of taking a harder look at this and trying to move this, this forward further.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, worship. I won't repeat what everyone else around this table has said, but I, from looking at that report for me, or report for myself, when we saw that jump from 4.3 to 8. whatever it was, I thought that was a pretty clear indication of how past councils have also, not just, it's not their fault, but it's just been something that's been kept continuously pushed off, is we continue to neglect our own assets, and I think that's one of the things that we need to really start getting, coming to grips with, is that we, these projects aren't going to go away. We could wait another 10 years to make a decision on this, but it's not going to make this issue go away. I think the other big thing that it's hard for some people to remember is that this is a workplace, this is a place where it's very active for our employees to be in this area, it's not just host council every other Monday. So, there's, this is a very central public service center, there's many people who work here and are working through those tough, tough conditions. My only question is, even through all this, we don't have anything but public consultation. $8 million is a lot of money, and I struggle to wonder why public isn't involved in this way. If we take it to an ad hoc committee, or if we send it to something else, what would the process be to have the public say on this? Obviously, we know it's going to come down to a decision by council, but I think the public might be a little bit more, more open to this if they were included in it.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas?
I don't mind restating what everybody else has said, but I'll do it in a much longer way. I'm kidding. You know, it occurs to me, hearing the report tonight and hearing everybody talk around the table, that we're really asking our staff to work in a building that none of us would live in. You know, if my plumbing didn't work, I'd fix it, if my heating didn't work, I'd fix it, but we ask staff to come in here every day and work in a building that none of us would live in. And I think that it's high time that we do something about it. I think that, you know, I'll, I don't think that renovations are ever inexpensive, and again, if anyone's ever done them at home, you know that. I think that, you know, all, all I would suggest, I'm certainly in favor if there's going to be a motion coming to take a little bit more time. I think it's just a lot to digest this quickly, and we do need to step back and take a look at it, but I have no doubt in my mind that we're going to be spending this money and we're going to be doing this renovation, because this building will not last another five years, much less 25 years, if we don't do something about it.
Thank you, Counselor Gregg.
Thank you, everybody. Just one quick question. In option B, I presume that $2.77 million is billing to, back to water? Is that user, the user fees that are noted there, that's water? And wastewater? And secondly, I, yeah, I didn't want to support this, because I couldn't support the timeline. I wish the Tom Thompson Art Gallery good luck, and perhaps if they were successful in what they're trying to endeavor to do at the old courthouse, I mean, we right now have three buildings. The courthouse, the Tom Thompson Art Gallery, and this building here, and if we were to restrict ourselves to a specific timeline, I don't think that would be wise, considering that perhaps one year later or two years later, the Tom Thompson has 14,000 square feet available for the relocation of the employees here while this building's being renovated. Thereby, there's approximately $400,000 of costs that you may be able to extract back out of the overall project cost, because we already own the building. So, I wouldn't support it being to that specific timeline. I absolutely support, we have to do something with this building, but like you say, said earlier, it's a lot to digest tonight, right now.
Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, worship. Certainly, hear all the comments from, from council, and I guess a few comments, certainly, I think we all agree, the building cannot continue as it is. I'm not sure, based on some of the issues we face, we certainly went without air conditioning in this building for the better part of two months last year. Staff were, again, very considerate, worked with us on that. At that time, we weren't sure we'd get parts for fixed it up, we, quite frankly, we jury rigged it. That could happen again to any systems we run here, so, I, again, without trying to fear monger, every day we try to extend this building, we run the risk of saying, well, there's another $50,000, $75,000 to replace, repair something that's only going to last several more years. The infrastructure is done. I think certainly the public involvement on many issues, you certainly know I am a proponent of going to the public, getting their opinion. I would say to council that, council, and quite frankly, your management team here, we are the employer in this case for 50 people that work in this building, and I do think, you know, that carries a certain onus, that we need to make sure that they are working in environmentally friendly and safe structures. And certainly, the cost to do that is vitally important, we realize that. However, ultimately, I believe this council and your senior management team here makes to, you know, ensure those people are working in a friendly and safe, environmentally friendly environment. But certainly, council, as I say, I have heard council's comments, they would like to work with us through this. I would ask that if that should be the motion, our contract with Congatz, who certainly have, I will say, your worship, devoted many hours to working with your team here to bring this presentation tonight, that we perhaps extend their contract, see if we can engage them to certainly assist council as we move forward in the coming months. They have been a valuable resource to us to get us this far, so, to move ahead without them involved, I'm afraid would not be prudent.
Thank you, I'm going to go to Counselor Kepke, who had her hand up tonight.
Thank you, worship.
It was going to be strategic if it didn't work. Go ahead.
That's okay. One of the most important things to me is the health and well-being of the staff that work here. This building has had several cosmetic fixes to it, I myself lived through two of them and worked right in the building as they were being renovated, and it is not a pretty sight, I'll tell you. I don't feel comfortable enough to make a decision tonight on which option, and I certainly agree that this ad hoc committee should look at it again and include the consultants and the staff that are pertinent to the decisions that were made, because there will be questions of them as well. And I think we need to do this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thanks. And from my point of view, I'm, want to be really thrifty of taxpayers' money. The further we kick this down the road, the longer it takes, it's not going to get any cheaper, because nothing ever gets cheaper when you kick things down the road, number one. And number two, when things deteriorate, then obviously, it's going to get more expensive. I do have some concerns how long it takes us here to kick it down the road, we've got some estimates here that may not stay the same. We've got some estimates here that may not stay the same. So, we're not talking about dragging this out for a long time, but I agree that, me, like everyone else, looked at it, read it yesterday morning, read it this morning, read it this afternoon, still wasn't done. And it's overwhelming the amount of information and the things to think about. So, Deputy Mayor Wright?
Yeah, I do have a motion, and my motion is...
Hold on just a second. Carolyn?
Your worship, just so you're aware, that ad hoc committee came to an end with the last board and committee bylaw. You may wish to refer it to Corporate Services as an alternative.
So, you have a choice of Corporate Services or to ask for a, the ad hoc committee to be reinstated to look at, just so it's up to you?
Okay, well, I, I think that the ad hoc committee would be willing to be reinstated. And the only reason I say this is because when we did the renovations in here, we had an ad hoc committee that stayed right with the renovations. Everything went smoothly. We didn't have any problems, because the councilors were kept informed. I know up at the county, we, that new addition, councilors have been informed all the way, and it's, it's going along fine. I just feel that, that they should be, the political decision is going to fall on our backs. So, we really should be involved in what's going on. So, my motion is that the ad hoc committee be reinstated, that the architects be kept on, to conclude this with, I don't care whether it's, you can do it in one meeting, but simplify this, include the councilors in it, that were on the ad hoc committee, so that they can come back and talk to us too about the report. Okay? And as soon as possible, because I too agree that this has to be done. Sooner the better, and the quicker we get it over and done with, the least publicity we're going to get.
Could I ask you to restate your motion kind of clearly and...
Okay. You want my motion?
Yeah, because you kind of went on there, and I wasn't, don't think I'm so part of it.
My reasons for the motion. My motion is that the ad hoc committee be reinstated, that the architects be kept on contract.
Committee be reinstated to do...
The committee be reinstated to take a look at, to simplify and bring back a report to council.
Okay, Counselor Thomas.
I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment, that that happen no later than the June 13th meeting of this council?
That can be added to it at all.
Counselor O'Leary?
I would be in favor of that motion. I just want to mention, I know we didn't want to repeat ourselves, but I will repeat what Counselor Dodd said. We can't forget about the public in this, and, and he makes a good point, but I don't think at this point, we should be going to the public. I think we'll get to that eventually, but we need to dissect these three options first, and then for sure, get the public involved. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thanks. Mr. Smith, you got that? Everyone else got it? Counselor Thomas, or sorry, the other way, McManaman, further down.
I'm fully in favor of it. I don't think there's any possible way it could be done by June. You're talking $8 million. I, that's just a personal opinion, but maybe I'm wrong. It's going to take several meetings. I can't imagine it being done by June, but that's just my editorial comment.
Okay, may we need to clarify, what do we expect to be done by June 13th? Go ahead.
I think my intent was that the ad hoc committee would report back to council by June 13th. Again, reflecting some of the comments around the table, how long are we going to drag it out? We to spend the whole summer doing this?
So, what the final recommendation?
I'd like to have a recommendation by June 13th.
Okay. Mr. Ritchie.
I hate to be the fly in the ointment, your worship, but I'm not sure from a staff perspective that, quite frankly, we can do that. As you know, literally, we need to begin gearing up for our service review meeting next week. I'm not sure what, what Congatz's schedule would be. Could I, could we perhaps continue on? We all sense the urgency, believe me. No one senses it more than I do, but we perhaps don't put a gun to our head on a time limit that perhaps I, I would have to disappoint you on. But I certainly realize the urgency of time, your worship.
So, if we remove that time limit and go back to the original motion, you're okay with it?
I'm always happy to take Mr. Ritchie's advice.
And I've got a funny feeling that staff doesn't want to delay it.
We could add "just as soon as possible" or something.
Go ahead, Brian.
Well, I'm just, I'm confused with that. Through your worship to the city manager, there is a recommendation from you tonight for us to pick option B. So, I don't understand why we wouldn't be ready to make a recommendation on an option six weeks from today.
Oh, through your worship, I am certainly fully supportive, after looking at all the information of staff and Congatz, that option B is the one that, in my, my personal opinion, is the best for the city in the future. Having said that, and I certainly value council's opinion, it is, it is a huge decision for this community. Personally, am I comfortable? I'm, I'm comfortable moving ahead, because I, I've spent all the time, as has the team, with Alar and his team. I feel that is the, you know, the best investment for the city on a very important capital asset of the city. I'm not sure, sensing tonight that council has that same confidence I do. Thus, I believe the ad hoc committee needs to meet with the team and Alar. I'm not sure if one meeting will be enough, or it may take several. I, again, I need to stress, for my own schedule, I'm going to devote the next week to a number of issues. The most important one being service review. I can speak for staff here. We have holidays, we're trying to get in as well, trying to do it in a month. We might be able to do it, and I don't know Alar's schedule, but it's more the comfort level. Would one meeting do it for council to come forward, the recommendation? I, I won't know until we have that meeting. I'm quite comfortable tonight, your worship.
Okay, so you're talking about the time it's going to take to bring us up to speed to where you are right now?
That's correct.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So, I think we'll call the motion the way it is now. I think everyone understands it, and we'll move on here. You don't understand it. Go ahead.
Sir, your worship, can I just clarify that that ad hoc committee was the same as it was constituted in 2015? So, Counselor Kepke, Counselor McManaman, and Counselor O'Leary?
Yep. Thank you.
Worship, I believe you are also in the ad hoc committee.
I think just executive, I think, and I'll continue to be. I may not get to vote, but they have to listen to me.
That's right. Absolutely.
Good.
You were voting executive on that?
I think so. Yeah, okay. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Good, that is carried. Thank you. We're all the way down to number three already. Integrated Parking Ticket Management System. Mr. Smith, are you presenting that, or is Mr. Ritchie? Ah. Ms. Allen?
Through your worship, this is a report to award the RFP for the Integrated Parking Ticket Management System. This is a project that was included and rationalized in the 2016 budget. The purpose of the RFP is to provide an integrated parking ticket management system. That would be a solution that provides hardware and applications to fulfill the process of generating tickets, recording ticket information, accepting payments, and allowing staff to generate reports. The purpose of the parking system, as I just said, would be to provide the integrated parking ticket system, to provide real-time information to both enforcement officers and SOS, to utilize current technologies and be able to adapt to new technologies, to integrate with an online payment solution, and to provide integrated and customized reports issued. In 2015, we issued 7,200 parking tickets, and certainly, we realized through that that our current system does not meet our needs completely. The top scoring proponent is G-Tecna, and their total cost came in within the capital component of, their capital component came in within our capital budget, and then the ongoing operating costs or service maintenance costs would be incorporated in future operating budgets.
Good, thank you. Questions? Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, worship. I'll move the recommendation.
Good. Other questions? Counselor, Deputy Mayor Wright?
Are we looking at these handheld parking? What are you talking about?
Certainly. So, this would incorporate everything from the ticketing hardware that they use to the application that our front counter staff use to accept payments, right through to the reports that we will generate as management for council and staff to give statistics on parking management and analyze that revenue.
And how, how old are the ones we now have?
I might have to refer to Sean to...
They're probably about seven or eight years old, and we're down to one printer and one handheld from three. I've had to rebuild them many times just to get it...
I can't believe that they're that old.
Uh, hey, sorry, did you not hear that? Approximately seven years old?
Yes, I heard that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But if you want to, want to repeat it, because people at home won't have heard it.
Certainly, approximately seven years old, and as Sean mentioned, we're down to one unit from three. We have had many issues with them breaking down, and he's constantly had to rebuild them in order to have one that is functioning, so that the parking system can function.
Okay, so, Counselor O'Leary moved it. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number four, purchasing agent, supply and delivery of two new 2016 tandem axle cab chassis with plow equipment. Go ahead, Mr. Backing.
I'm up on this one, your worship. Thank you, worship. As the report indicates, we're in a position of having to replace two trucks. The first of the trucks was in fact intended to be replaced as part of the 2015 capital budget, and the night before we were to take delivery, there was a fire in the storage bay, and the truck was damaged. We have refused to accept a receipt of the truck, so that puts us in a position where we're now having to replace two trucks in the current year. In accordance with, with city policy bids were solicited, one bid was received from Lewis Motors of Collingwood in the amount of $588, $826. Ah, let's do this again. $568,826, or approximately $284,400 per truck gross. Now, those amounts are not reflective of the, of the recovery that we'll get from the sale of the, the two vehicles that are to be replaced. And on, based on our past experience, we expect to bring both purchases in under budget once we net out the, the salvage value of the, the two trucks. The bids, notwithstanding the fact that we only received one bid, the bids are in line with bids that we have received in the past. When they are adjusted to reflect, there has been some industry standard changes with respect to emission controls, and that has caused the 2016 models to, to be approximately $30,000 more expensive than previous years. The, we did consider as part of the analysis of the process, the issue of contracting out. Based on, on actual bid prices that have been received, both by the town of Blue Mountains and by the county, we estimate that based on last winter's actual plowing amounts, contracting out these two plows would cost the city at least an additional $21,000 for the winter season. And thus, it's questionable whether there's any economic justification to do so. Nonetheless, that's the analysis. The staff recommendation is to award the contract to Lewis Motors, and to, there is a clause within the contract that will enable us to take receipt of those vehicles in time for the coming winter season.
Good, thank you. Questions? Motionists? Oh, Counselor Dodd, you put your hand up.
Thank you, worship. I was just wondering maybe if, through you to the director of, your title's now engineering and...
Public Works in Engineering.
There we go, mouthful. Maybe just to give the, the people at home, just an understanding, I know these units are only nine years old, but something we always hear, or something I always hear from some people, but why do we always replace our units? Why don't we run them to the ground, basically? So...
The, the challenge that we face are several. First of all, like with any other vehicle, even our own personal vehicles, yes, you can run them into the ground, but at the end of the day, you are going to incur maintenance and, and repair costs that are escalating over the life of the vehicle. Based on, on a statistical analysis of, of our purchases over the years, the optimum seems to be between seven, eight, nine years, somewhere in that, that range. I can tell you that, by way of example, the truck that we didn't replace last year because it was late being delivered and because it got caught in the fire, we blew the, the turbocharger out of the truck that was going to be replaced. And if you recall, in the, the analysis of, of the year-end statistics for, or the year-end financials for the 2015 year, the Director of Corporate Services made note the fact that the parts budget for fleet was significantly over budget. That's one of the reasons why, is that you're, you're, you take a, frankly, a hell of a pounding on, on your repair costs. The other thing that, that we have a challenge with, and it's, it's related, has to be, has to do with reliability of the equipment. We have no way of predicting when it's going to snow. And when that truck goes down, that means roads don't get plowed. And that, you know, and you can imagine the chain of reactions that, that happens as a result of that. Reliability is a, is a crucial issue for us. So, that's the other reason. We just can't afford having the downtime.
Okay, good. We in a motion?
Yep, I'll move the recommendation. Thank you.
Further comments? All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. Number five is the annual contract with Georgian Bay Folk Society for Summer Folk, August 18th to 21st, 2016, Kelso Beach Park.
Thank you, worship. This is an annual event. It begins Thursday, August 18th, with a volunteer accreditation and appreciation event. The report deals with three things. And one are generally the standard conditions with respect to the use of Kelso Beach Park, the approval of the licensed area. Third is the noise bylaw exemption, and that is till midnight on, on those nights, Thursday, Friday, sorry, Thursday, no, till, till midnight on Friday and Saturday evenings, so that they can play only at the Down by the Bay tent. We also have, or are looking for council's direction with respect to the waiving of the setup and teardown fee. So, the fee for Kelso Beach Park over the number of days is $1,227 for the, for the park rental. In council's fees by law, there's a $25 a day fee for setup and teardown. There's eight days of setup and teardown together. So, we are just looking for council's direction with respect to that $200.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, worship. I'm happy to move the recommendation, and that would include the waiver of the $200. I know that this is an event that brings a lot of people into the city. Having been a volunteer there for 40 years myself, it's, it's a great event, so I'm happy to move the recommendation.
All in favor? No, you guys want to talk about it? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be in support of that. I know we waived that fee last year too. But I have a quick question. The request for police services to arrange for a bylaw enforcement officer to monitor throughout the weekend, do we incur an additional cost for that? Or, to me, that strikes me as something that the event organizer should be having in place.
I'd have to check with police services whether they charge either the city, they, they do charge summer folk for that.
Okay. Counselor McManaman?
Thank you, worship. Just to, I'm opposed to the motion of waiving the fee for the second year in a row. It's five days of exclusive use of the park where we can't grant it to anybody else. So, I would suggest, if council doesn't want that fee there, they should ask for a subsequent report to remove that fee. There's a report a little later where we're charging the same fee to, to another group. So, I don't support it. If we want to remove it, then let's just not have that fee anymore. But those five days, no one else is allowed to book the park for use. So, I'd ask if that portion could be pulled from the motion and voted on separately.
Counselor Kepke?
It's fine if you want to vote on it separately.
Okay. Counselor O'Leary?
Well, he took the words right out of my mouth. I won't be in favor of waiving any fees.
Okay, so the motion is basically to approve the recommendation...
Save and Accept Clause 5.
Save and Accept Clause 5. And going to call the clause no in favor? That is carried. Now, do we have to deal with Clause 5, or we...
With respect to Clause 5, I'll move a motion that we waive the $200 fee for summer folk.
Okay, so, all in favor? One, two, opposed? One, two, three, four, five, so that's defeated. Okay, good. defeated. Okay, good, thank you. Yep, yep, go ahead.
Through you, your worship, to Ms. Calder, during summer folk, are they, are they, is the public still allowed to use the splash pad?
Through you, worship, on the actual days of summer folk, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, access to the splash pad would be restricted. During the teardown and setup, though, there, we do our best to make sure that the trail along the waterfront and the splash pad remain open, as long as they're not using vehicles to move equipment, just to make sure it's safe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're down to number six, which is Contract Services Household Acidous Waste Municipal Participation Plan.
Thank you, your worship. Traditionally, the city has partnered with our surrounding municipalities to deliver this program. I'm pleased to advise that this year, Chatsworth has decided to join our other partners, which include me, for Great Georgian Bay, Georgian Bluffs, Gray Highlands, and West Gray in the program. Participating municipalities pay fourteen hundred dollars an administration fee, as well as twenty-five dollars per vehicle for the materials received. In the past year, we received in excess of eighteen hundred loads of, of material, and that, this, this is the stuff that really drives landfills wild because of the, of the chemical makeup of it, so it's a very, very valuable program. The grants are received from stewardship in Ontario and the various stewardship boards, and, and those grants are in turn reimbursed back into the, the partners in relation to the, the amount of material that gets generated from that municipality. So, it's a, it's a win-win for all of the, all of the participants. The recommendation is that council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreements to enable the program to proceed this year.
Good, thank you. Deputy Mayor Wright?
Yes, I will move that recommendation as it is recorded, and I just have one question. The municipality of West Gray, is it new coming in, or is it has, have we collected for the...
I believe they were a partner last year.
I think so, yes.
It's Chatsworth that hasn't been involved since, I believe, 2009 or 2010.
Well, I think this is an example, a wonderful example of cooperation among municipalities, so...
I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? That is carried, thanks. Number seven, Engineering Technologists with regard to servicing agreement for Peninsula Pro Growth Business Park.
Thank you, your worship. Peninsula Pro Growth was approved to occupy the former PBG site. The new use required new servicing arrangements, including a new water service to the, to the site. Council approved and granted permission for connection to the existing water main. However, upon excavation, it was determined that, at some point in the past, a very large diameter storm sewer was built directly over top of the water main, to the point where it made it impossible and unsafe in order to do the tap into the, into the existing water main. So, we had to come up with a, an alternative plan which involved extending, the only practical plan was to extend another water main a considerable distance up in order to facilitate servicing of the site. We, the arrangement that was negotiated was that the con, the developer's contractor would do the work on the basis of a fifty-fifty split, which we felt was fair and reasonable to both parties, and the city would supply some, some relatively modest bits of equipment, including a fire hydrant and a, and a fire hydrant lead. The overall cost to the city is sixty-two thousand five forty-five twenty-two. The agreement that is before you formalizes the, the actual, the actual arrangement that was negotiated between the parties, and it is the staff recommendation that council pass a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Hey, Councilor Lemon?
Yes, your worship, I would move the recommendation.
Good, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We're down to eleven B agenda items, which is the consent items. Give us a run through the schedule.
Yes, your worship, there are two reports, excuse me, from the Facilities Booking Coordinator. One on the Keystone Child and Youth Family Services Family Fund Festival at Kelso Beach on June 11th. The other, the concert at Kelso Beach Park, the Concert Factory Inc. on June 24th, which I believe is the Blues Festival. There are planning notices where no report was deemed necessary by the planning community planner. There are minutes of boards and committees for receipt, downtown improvement area board of management meetings, January 20 and February 24, Gray Sobble Conservation Authority, Full Authority Board of Directors on March 9th. A series of resolutions from other municipalities received in correspondence presented for the information of council, all of which, except one or two, relate to three themes: renewable energy, the No Wake Resolution, Bill 158, human trafficking. And there's correspondence from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators regarding the city manager.
Have a motion from somebody to receive items eleven B one through to eleven B six, and rec, that the recommendations contained in report eleven B one, eleven B two be approved. Motion, Councilor Kepke?
I'll move that motion, your worship.
All in favor? It's carried, thank you. If we can go back in, we've got number four, DIA, minutes from January 20th, February 24th.
Thank you, your worship. We had a deputation from Ruby Frank and Esther Gueranger from HER, and HER is Heal, Empower, Reeducate. They've started a poster campaign featuring local men promoting positive messages about the prevention of sexual assault. We have transferred money from the beautification fund to redo the permanent flower pods in the downtown area. We had a deputation from Victoria Watson reviewing the independent auditor's report for 2015, stating that it was a clean audit. We had a deputation regarding a partnership between the Festival of Northern Lights and the DIA. Don McMillan and Jamie Walpo met with us to work together on a Trillium grant. We also reviewed correspondence from Doug Cleberly regarding the BRAC Classic Hill Climb. This event will take place on the 17th of September at Inglis Falls, and the Friday evening before that, there'll be a preview event in downtown Owen Sound, featuring fifty to sixty vintage and historical cars and motorcycles. Thank you, your worship.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. If we can, Councilor Kepke, you'd want to give us an update on the Gray Sobble Conservation Authority meeting from March 9th?
Thank you, your worship. A few things of note, a letter from the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry regarding Fragmities, who commended, sorry, commended the work of the Gray Sobble Conservation, and encouraged them to facilitate and collaborate the management of Fragmities. Gray Sobble and Gray County are working together to secure funding from the province and the federal government, to have students to do work on the inventory of Fragmities in the area. Also, there was discussion about the classic, the BRAC Classic Car Hill Climb, which is taking place September 16 and 17. And I believe that's it in those minutes, thank you.
Any questions? Councilor Scott, Councilor Gregg?
I do have a question, and a concern that I wonder if you could take forth to the Gray Sobble Conservation Authority. Harrison Park is the jewel in our community, and when you enter in on the entranceway, for a very prolonged period of time now, it's all sandbags to the right-hand side, and it looks terrible. I guess it's being treated as a, a fish, a fish habitat, or, or something along those lines. But I wonder, our park right now needs a lot of investment, and that's the first thing that every car drives by, sees, and looks terrible, so it should be something that gets rem, remedied pretty quick.
I have asked Conservation Authority staff about that, and they are working with city staff, so perhaps the director could update us on what's happening there.
Through you, your worship, we are working on a plan which will have to be submitted to Gray Sobble for approval. It is a fill-regulated area and a cold water stream.
So, it's our park, our responsibility, but we need their approval once we put together, once we put the plan on their plate? Good, okay, thanks. I had note in the correspondence, we've received a letter from Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators dated April 11th, 2016. Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators Long Service Recognition Award Program recognizes and celebrates the dedication to public service municipal managers, municipal management of our members, which is a significant priority for our association. These awards are based on a number of years' service, paid employment in municipal government, in the, in a management capacity. They are granted at ten years and given a five-year increment. This year, in your municipality, or our municipality, we acknowledge the commitment of your city manager, Mr. Wayne Ritchie, for his fifteen years' municipal service in a management capacity. His recognition pin has been mailed to him, have you received it yet, to him directly. So, congratulations from all of us, Wayne, on being recognized by the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, and from behalf of us, thanks for fifteen years of service. We look forward to the next fifteen years. Councilor Lemon plans to be here for all of them. I think probably all of them. Eleven C, Minutes of Boards and Committees, Minutes from the Community Services Committee Meeting held April 20th.
Thank you, your worship. At this meeting, council, our first item on the agenda was the discussion about the Harrison Park Pool Study. The consultant from Montith Brown Planning came and gave an overview of what was going to be discussed, what was going to be looked at. They're going to assess the current state of the Harrison Park Pool, look at participation trends, identify any future needs and options moving forward. Key parts of the, how they're going to do this are a public engagement review, so any past studies, demographics, usage, do an operational review, and inspect the pool, and come back with cost estimates. So, I just would point out that, that public, there is a public host, open house on Wednesday, May 18th. That's prior to the, or, sorry, as part of the Community Services Committee, and that's where the public is invited to come, hear from the consultants, and have some discussion back and forth on ideas, or, we know that Harrison Park Pool is near and dear to many people's hearts, so that's where we want to hear from you. That's Wednesday, May 18th, here at City Hall. Also, if there's, if you want to email in comments, that's, that's fine, too. This was the, also the meeting, we discussed the proposed, and it says improvements in the minutes, and I think that needs, the motion actually is proposed changes, because I think some groups would argue whether they were improvements or not. That was when that discussion was had about Tom Williams Park. Basically, one of the, the Slow Pitch League proposed some changes to the park. They were not supported by the minor ball groups, I think that's a fair statement. Committee recommendation is to not move forward with any changes as proposed by the Slow Pitch League. I would note, one of the positives that did come out of the meeting, we heard from some youth, and we heard from a number of users of the park, was that hopefully a program going forward of some maintenance and upgrades, using some funds perhaps from the Tom Williams, a fun park, from the Tom Williams Fund to facilitate some of those upgrades. I would, I would encourage anyone in council has, there's a complete write-up on Mr. Williams and some of the past history of Tom Williams, and it's quite a story, and even I wasn't fully aware of it, his fifty years on the Parks Board and his, his involvement with just about every major park in this city. So, anyway, some interesting reading, if anybody's interested online, that's a, there's some interesting facts there from our history. The other issue we dealt with at the, or some of the, some of the other issues we dealt with at the meeting, discussed St. George's Community Park and their plans, the expansion of their CMHC gardens. Council recalled they came to the committee, or came to council asking for approval in principle, and all we did at this committee was basically get some of the fine details for year one of what they're going to do at St. George's. The other one, you'll recall, there was a request from several communities asking us to comment on the Ontario Municipal Board and how they function. There's an excellent report from Ms. Potter in here. Basically, it asked if Owen Sound would, would take part in this, asking for a review of it. I guess the first comment is that there is hopefully going to be a province-wide review in the next while, where we'll be asked to formally submit comment. The second one is, I guess, our experience with the, the Ontario Municipal Board hasn't been perhaps what other municipalities have experienced. In three years, we've had eighty-four applications. We've had three appeals, only one of which actually went to a hearing. So, and we were successful in that hearing. So, I guess what I would say is our, and, and on the other side of that, we have appealed decisions of other municipalities, the Ontario Municipal Board, and it's been successful. So, our experience with them, with the, the OMB, has been perhaps somewhat different than other communities, and I'd like to think that's part of our, the way we do business, whether it's, we're seeking out public input and, and asking the community before the decision is made. I'll just leave that comment right there. Might remind you of some other things we've been discussing recently. The last, there's a discussion around the Bethune House, the lease agreement, that's coming back to the committee around the art gallery and the, the house beside the art gallery and, and its future use. And, I believe, and that, sorry, this is, nope, that's it, your worship, those are all the minutes I would move for approval.
Question from Councilor Kepke?
Thank you. Could you tell me what time the public meeting is on the park, Harrison Park?
I have it written right in front of me, and I didn't say it, sorry. Five-thirty, Wednesday, May 18th is the public open house. For people that have comments, questions, concerns, at City Hall, we'd love to hear from you.
Good. Another question, just, okay. All in favor of Councilor McMahonman's motion for approval of those minutes? That's carried, thank you. Minutes Economic Development Tourism Advisory Committee from April 15th.
Thanks, your worship. As a part of this meeting, we had an employment trends presentation from our manager of economic development and tourism. He pointed out that Owen Sound's employment growth is still a little bit slower than it was in 2006, but is moving upwards in the right direction. Job growth, of course, does not mean population growth. There is a lot of mobility between municipalities now for work, and one of the great examples he gave us was the bus that goes from Owen Sound every day to Chapman's Ice Cream in Markdale, taking people down there to work. Owen Sound's top employment sector is healthcare, and then after that, manufacturing and retail. We had a report on our angel investing program, which the committee and the city have been assisting with pushing forward, but have no formal role in it. We had guests from the Northern Ontario Angels Network who came down and met with about a hundred community and business leaders, and the good news is that seven potential angels have, have said they're willing to invest their time in building a Gray Bruce Owen Sound Angel Investment Network, so we'll hear more of that coming down the road. The other interesting thing about this meeting is we've kind of turned the committee on its head, and we're trying something new, trying to use it as a bit of a think tank. We have a lot of people with great ideas around the table, and rather than spending the whole time in a formal meeting hearing reports, we opened it up for the last hour of the hour and a half, to just have a roundtable and get ideas on the table of ways in which we could possibly move Owen Sound forward. We had a lot of discussion about how we, how we go about attracting young people back to this community. Young people have left. I know we discussed Waterloo, Cambridge, and Toronto are working very hard on this right now, how they attract young people back to their communities. So, it's not an unusual problem, certainly, and there are answers out there. We talked a little bit about building a stronger relationship with Bruce Power, and perhaps having a meeting down at the Bruce Power Site of our committee, and inviting them to participate. We also talked about the possibility of trying to create more special events for the community of Owen Sound. In fact, trying to have themed months. So, every month of the year is a themed month with a special event built around it. So every month of the year is a themed month with a special event built around it. None of this is cast in stone. These are all just ideas at this point, but these are the kind of things that we're coming up with at the committee. And we will examine many of those ideas in more depth. And as we did with the Angels Investment, probably form much smaller groups of two to three individuals who will really take a hardcore look at some of the ideas. And with that, I would move those minutes.
All good news. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor, carried, thanks. Counselor Dodd, I'm throwing you into the fire here, but you had a meeting with the minister. Can you give us a quick update in that off the cuff without any warning?
Thank you, worship, I did, but you were in China.
Oh, you've already reported it to council, okay, good.
You didn't, you didn't watch us?
I watched some of it, but you'd never believe this, but I actually fell asleep watching a council meeting on Rogers Cable. Well, come on, but I had jet lag, so I, honest, lots of, lots of jet lag. Eleven D, minutes of closed meetings from the Owensound DIA Board of Management. Counselor Larry?
Thank you, worship. I will move approval of those minutes, including the amendment made during the in-camera session.
Good, so all in favor? That is carried, well done. Number two, minutes of closed session from Owensound Housing Company Limited. Counselor Lemon, moving them? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Number eleven E, minutes of closed meetings for approval. Got a closed session of regular council meeting in April 18th, and another one, special council meeting of April 27th. Everybody's hand went up. Deputy Mayor Wright, moving both of those?
I will move those, those two sets of minutes.
Okay, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. We're down to other business. Where did I write it down? There we go. Mr. Ritchie had one.
I did, your worship. I was going to get Mr. Parker to assist me, but it looks like he's perhaps preoccupied. No, he's alert, and he's right at the mic.
Thank you for the cue. This Sunday, Monday, excuse me, May the ninth, at the Bay Shore Community Center will be the Service Review Public Forum. And all of your worship and members of council are certainly welcome to attend. The city manager is going to be going through all sixty-three recommendations that were put forward by council. And then following that, we'll have stations of each of the directors responsible for their specific departments, at which members of the public are welcome to go up, have open dialogue, and discuss all of the items, and bring new items as well. So the public is certainly welcome to, even if they feel certain items are not addressed, to bring them forward at the meeting. The time is from six to eight, and we, we welcome everyone to attend.
Go ahead, Mr. Ritchie.
If I could, your worship, I want to be clear, our intent at this time, and we've, we've certainly given this some thought, and again, we're working our way through this, this dialogue process. But at this time, at this particular meeting, it won't be, and I'll refer to the ATV meeting we had here, a monitored back and forth amongst the participants. With sixty-three issues plus, we are really encouraging that there may be additional issues we'd like to hear from the public. Staff will be there, the professional staff in each of these areas, to, to provide information that may help people form their opinion on that particular option that is before council, as well as give us, we're going to encourage them to fill out the cards, to fill out online. We're going to have relatively large sticky notes, quite frankly, that we can stick up prominently, so that hopefully encouraging people as they walk by, and I certainly hope it encourages council and staff to say, there's an idea, quite frankly, we hadn't thought of. It is something worth pursuing. So in, in light of two hours, the breadth of conversation, there will not be that monitored back and forth at each station. It will very much be, you have a question about the specific areas, the staff there can answer the question, not trying to steer you in an opinion, but to give you the information on which you can then fill out the card, provide us information. I see this, your worship, perhaps at a later date, looking for public in, input. When we get down to four, five, perhaps only three issues, that there are, you know, serious divisions in the community on whether we move ahead with these options or we don't, perhaps then holding a monitored session where council would be interested in getting the specific interests of groups who, again, feel that, whatever change that is, will either impact them negatively or positively, hopefully. And that's when we might get into a monitored back and forth. And again, it isn't to stop dialogue, it's to try to get dialogue forthcoming. So at this point, before we get down to those, I'll say the nitty-gritty, three or four very tough decisions that council may wish. So that's the intention.
So Service Review Public Input Session, May, May 9th, 6:30 at the Bay Shore Community Center. If you can't come to that, you can still participate by?
Email servicereview2016@owensound.ca, or visit www.owensound.ca/servicereview2016. All the information is on the website. You can also participate in the survey online as well. If you don't visit any of the municipal buildings that have the service cards at those locations.
Service cards are available at City Hall at?
The library, Harrison Park, Tom Thompson, Julie MacArthur, Bay Shore Bus Station, Public Works.
So we're, so we're looking for public input as much as we can get. Counselor, oh, there. Sorry, 6:30 PM?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, sorry, it's me that had it wrong. So six to eight, I was saying 6:30. So six to eight, May 9th at the Bay Shore. Good, thank you. Any other questions? No. Counselor McMahonman?
Just wanted to highlight that this coming Friday night at, is the Owensound, the, the biannual Owensound Sports Hall of Fame Induction Dinner and Awards from six till 10. I was hoping they, apparently they don't have tickets for sale anymore. So if you're listening at home and want to go, perhaps you could maybe talk to, go up to Bill Simpson's barbershop and see if he might be able to find a ticket. But anyways, this Friday, and we'll report back after that on the, the inductees.
Good, thank you. Counselor Greg, two items.
Real quickly, just as you were recovering, returning from China, I was at the YMCA for a trillium grant ceremony, a grant which was, which came forth benefiting the Alzheimer's Minds in Motion Program. And this was for here on Perth and the Gray Bruce locations. It may be of interest to individuals to contact the local Gray Bruce Alzheimer Society. We had an interactive session, and I did terrible, trying to keep my, my body going alongside my brain. But it's a three-year funding commitment that the province made, and it's at a great location at the YMCA. So I would urge anybody that is interested in that program to contact the local Gray Bruce Alzheimer Society. And secondly, then, I guess that same day, was able to bring greetings from our mayor for the Owensound Field Naturalists, who had a Chi Chi Mon book reading from, with John Riley, who's a famed ecologist farmer in, well, southwest of Gray County, up in the Highlands, and author of The Once and Future Great Lakes Country. And he provided a retrospective look, going back many hundreds of years in this area, and also created some real thought to how we can look forward to a restorative future and bring back some of what we've lost in the area. And alongside that, I might just see if our clerk, Jeff, is able to bring up photos and issue a challenge. Yesterday was also the height for hospice. It's that time of year now, the sun is shining and spring is here. We have a setting in our community which is unlike almost anyone else in the province. Our location here in the Great Lakes is so beautiful, and there is so much around us. So there's three photos there. I won't say where that's located, but that's just within one kilometer of our city limits. Just a look at the separation on the Niagara's garden. We're just so fortunate to be where we are. It's that time of year. April was quite cold, much colder than normal. But the sun's shining, and I encourage people to get outside, get active, and take advantage of what we are so grateful to call home.
Good, thank you. My activities since coming home, I was able to attend the 90th birthday of Mammon Arie, which a lot of people know, the 100th birthday of Helen Alice, who some of us have known for, well, all of my life, worked at McKay's Downtown. I think her and her husband owned the Selden House Hotel at one point. Attended the Main Street Hair Salon Annual Walk for Water, and I think they raised Counsel Larry's $36,000. Thirty-six thousand dollars, which is amazing. Also Saturday morning walk, so kids can talk, which was funding for the Kids Help phone line, so kids that have got any challenges whatsoever, little depression, a little bit of bullying, a little bit, whatever they have issues that they can't feel they can talk to friends or parents about, there's a phone line available for them to, to phone, which is pretty important in our community. Mr. Ritchie already covered, we met Friday morning with the chief of Nejwan and discussed the Tsawqin and Jibway Nations' interest in the, in the dredging and in the water. And I've got some pictures that I'd like to show you and sort of share some quick stories on, on China. First of all, I want to express my appreciation for our local Chinese community that were very supportive and gave me lots of information before I went. They're important to bringing students to Canada because, you know, a Chinese student coming to Toronto who can live in a Chinese community in Toronto will never learn to speak English or have to speak English. They do up here, but yet there's support, if they come to schools up here, from our local Chinese community to, to help them out whenever they want to. Two main things that I came away from China thinking, and that is how much I appreciate our multiculturalism in Canada. We had some visible minorities in our bus that might as well have been circus freaks. People were going up and taking pictures of them. And the Chinese culture just isn't prepared to see people that are different than them, including me at some places, and, and my six-foot-two son, who it was mostly curls that were taking pictures of him, but it was very interesting. The other thing is we get frustrated from time to time with accessibility laws and the fact that we need to do things faster. We had somebody that was in a wheelchair, and China just is not prepared for that whatsoever. We've got such a long way to go, but it's so important to watch this person, what she didn't get to do, what she didn't get to see, because simple ramps and simple things that could have been easily there, they have enough people in the workforce to, to make them, and they weren't there. So I'm going to show some things going from kind of old to new in, in history. Red tag in this tree means that this tree is over 400 years old. So you think about it. Champlain started to set up a, a settlement where Quebec City is now in 1608. So approximately that time, these trees are being planted by the Ming Dynasty in the garden at the back of the, of their Forbidden City. Beautiful garden. I want to flip to the next one. This is what you call recycling in China. Now, get you to note the directions painted on the roads. Lights, directions, et cetera, just sort of a rough guide to be followed very loosely. An intersection in Beijing is sort of poetry in motion, it's ballet. I don't know how no one gets killed, but it seems to work. And this guy's clearly in the wrong side of the road. The guy behind him, of course, has no visibility around him. So if there's a bus coming, I don't know what happens. Somehow they just weave around each other. Never ever let a brake replace a horn was one of the things that I learned over there. Okay. Now, flipping cities, Shanghai, if you look at this train, bullet train, what's that, 100 meters long, approximately? Really, really, really long. Huge. Get you to flip to the next one, a little bit of video when two trains, oops, did we miss one? There should be a video on there. There we go. Okay, so when, these trains move at 431 kilometers an hour, but they slow down to about 320 when they go past each other. Ready? That was the 100-meter train.
But when you're on the train, you don't see it, you just see.
No, no, you just get this, and that's, that's about it. What have we got next there? I think next we're going to Dai County. That's a meeting Mayor Tan Lau. Two interpreters in the back, as you can see, the, they don't have a city flag, they have national flags. The mayor was really fun, threw interpreters lots of teasing. It was fun having dinner with him before he left. He was in a hurry to get to the next meeting, but it was great to meet with him. Next picture, the signing of the agreement that we've brought back copies that will get framed. Having kind of jet-lagged, I was trying to figure out what day it was, and I just asked. So I've kind of got a smirk on my face, and he's kind of looking at me, wondering what I just asked. If you notice the white gloves and the whole treatment. Standing directly behind me is Mr. Long Xiao, I hope I'm saying it right. He came over and filmed Owensound with a TV show a couple of years ago, took it back, and is really the, the guy that talked them into twinning with us. So he'll be back over here in October. Next one, shaking hands after. You can tell by the billboard how seriously they've taken it. Next. This is the Sichuan, so we're in Sichuan Province, Sichuan Provincial People's Association for Friendship with Foreign Countries. They provided some annual books that Mr. Alan Parker, I think, has in his room. We've got them here somewhere that I encourage everyone to take a look at. They go back to 2013 when the photo museum was opened with all the photos that were taken over there from, from this area. Next. So they bragged about their ski hill and how many square or vertical feet it is. So you go up in a gondola to the village, which is at 2,155 meters. And there's a whole village there with the ski hills, but the ski hills are actually very small. And going up in the gondola there, asked me questions about Blue Mountains, and I was talking about sixteen lifts and forty-nine ski hills. And I think the speed chair at Blue Mountains, I think, can move, I think it's 2,100 people per hour, and they, they can't quite do that yet. But beautiful, beautiful setting. From there, you're onto another gondola, go ahead. No, okay, missed it. From there, you're onto another gondola up to about 3,800 feet, and views of the mountain tops and looking all the way back into Tibet from the very top. This is at the 100-year-old photo gallery, which is made up of Canadian old photo exhibits. So after the Cultural Revolution, when they wiped out all their history, they came to children and grandchildren of all the missionaries that had been over there. So this is a connection with Rita Gifford Kilborn. Kevin Best's grandfather's picture is in here. Wilmots, that we all know, their family were very strong there. Dr. Lloyd Anna, some of us will remember him, was born over there, and his parents were very strong over there. So all these pictures that were collected from the mountains, from the, the people are on display there. And I don't know if I'm supposed to say it, but there's a real hope that they're going to be brought over to U of T in October in, in an exchange, which would be really, really special. These missionaries that went over from here introduced, actually, if you want to go to the next slide, introduced Western architecture into, into the, the Eastern architecture. So this is a gate that was built at a landowner's house about 100, 120 years ago. And so there is some square parts in there, and there's some parts that are very Western in architecture, mixed in with the flowers and with the fish and with all the symbolism of, of China. This mansion was huge, and it's been preserved as a, as a museum. Dai County is very much a museum county, you'll love it. This is particularly kept because the landlord was very nasty, and they'd kill people. they didn't pay their rent. It was, one of the reasons why the People's Republic took control was because landlords were so abusive of people and worked them till they died of hunger, starvation, et cetera. This one, Ying and Yang, they also pointed out that he took his money and educated their kids. Also was an opium trader, and really neat, really neat history. Go ahead. Another historic village, Anran Town, so I think there's twenty-seven mansions off the, or I guess you'd call them mansions. The main part of any of the property, of wealthy property, is the size of the courtyard, so you'd have these beautiful garden courtyards with houses off of them. We have an opportunity, they would like to have the Tom Thompson Art Gallery involved with these twenty-seven museums that they have there. In another year, they do these great art displays all over the world, and hopefully we can be involved. Go ahead. Next was a huge museum, Jianchong, if I think if I pronounce it right, which of course it won't be, War Museum. So this park was to people from outside of China that helped them with their cause, that's the monument, one of the monuments in the country for Dr. Bethune, who of course finished high school here at OSCDI, is a national herald there. Want to hit the next one? No, okay. There was also a really, really moving park that had over two hundred full-size statues of people that fought the Japanese from thirty-three to forty-five, and you had Shanghai Shack with Chairman Mao in the same park, because at one point, both of them fought the Japanese together and then didn't like each other eventually. This is out the window of Shanghai, so where you've got a lot of ancient history in Beijing, you have a very quickly changing economy in Shanghai. Little apartment buildings down along the bottom, a hundred and eighty thousand yen per square meter, which I've calculated to be about three million dollars for an eight-hundred square foot apartment condominium. Very, very wealthy, the highest building is a hundred and twenty-eight stories high. When we were leaving, looking back in the bus, the top was in the clouds. When we're in the plane above the clouds, we look back and you can see the top of the building sticking out of the clouds. It's architectural eye candy, no buildings are allowed to be built that look anything like any of the others. Every piece of building is just spectacular in this downtown area. Go ahead, Sean. Is that the Oriental Pearl, which used to be the tallest building there, and it isn't anymore, but it's beautiful. At night, they're all covered with different lights. If you look in the background, just the different pieces of architecture. What I'm standing on there, there's a ring road where the cars go around, then they built a ring road for people to walk around, so there's escalators, elevators, and stairs at each corner to get up in the ring road, so you don't get hit by cars going through, and it's now a tourist place to go and wander around, look at all the buildings. Go ahead, Sean, next. So the one in the building was the middle, is the one that was a hundred and twenty-eight floors, it's the Shanghai Tower. Apparently you can live in it, you can work in it, there's offices, there's a school, there's shopping, there's no reason to ever leave the building if you move in, if you can imagine. If you look really closely, you can see on the outside of the building, there's a glass bulb around the outside of it, and then a building inside, so there's air somehow moved through the glass structure and then through the windows inside of it. The two buildings on each side are, they're kind of tiny, that's the International Finance Center Towers, they're only fifty-two and fifty-eight stories. So downtown Toronto, the CN Tower is, or not the CN, TD Center is fifty, or is it fifty-two? Something like that, so these are bigger. So I think that was it, maybe go one more, back, back all the way around. Our host in Dai County was Mayor Lau, and the Sichuan Association for Friendship already said that, they're very, very forthright, and they want to immediately set up educational and cultural exchanges with our schools, with Georgian College High Schools, and with our art gallery. They're trying to build tourism, and eventually would like to do exchanges, manufacturing and industrial changes. They clearly had done their research before I got there, they'd been waiting for three years for us to go and were very anxious. They made it very clear that the ball's in our court to put some of these things together and get back to them and not drag for three more years. I think the mayor's comment was that things don't end with the signing of a piece of paper, that's just the start. We'll work together and maybe someday we will then be friends, just to put things in perspective. Dai is seventy percent mountains, ten percent rivers, twenty percent plains. Sichuan, of course, had an earthquake in two thousand and eight, sixty-nine thousand people died, another eighteen thousand were missing. Driving through these country roads, it's, you'll see some beautiful little houses, it'll be a hundred years old, that are small, with a garden plot about the size of this room and the size of a mountain. The food was like the best, it was really good. So Mr. Alan Parker is continuing to communicate with them with regard to next steps, and we're hoping that they'll be here, definitely somebody will be here in October, we're hoping that someone will be here in July to visit us and take that next step, and have been in contact with the art gallery and with Georgian College, who are very keen to be involved, and perhaps we're all going to start to take some Mandarin lessons so we can communicate a little better next time we go over, so. Wonderful opportunity for me and for my family, we set up our own holiday around it so we could get there and save the city money, but, and then once we're at Dai, it was diplomatic treatment by them of us, food, the best food, the best buses, the best hotels, it was amazing. I encourage everyone to go to China at some point, and especially to Dai at some point in the future. So unless anyone's got any questions? Babble long enough, five to ten. Number thirteen, I think, motion that the committee rise?
It can rise.
All in favor? That is carried. Formal session, resolution adopting proceedings, committee in the hall.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gregg, that the action taken in committee of the hall and concerning public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters arising with correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for which notice was previously given, and other business be hereby confirmed by this council.
All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Notice a motion, seeing none, new business by resolution, we have none. Bylaws?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor O'Leary, the bylaws number twenty sixteen fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and twenty sixteen sixty, be hereby passed and enacted.
And all in favor? Thank you, carried. Given that it's five to ten, and we're all tired, and it's really hot in here, is it okay? And I just babbled for too long. Is it okay if Carolyn doesn't read the bylaws tonight? You guys are all in favor? Okay. So that concludes our business for this meeting, thanks everybody. We're adjourned at nine fifty-eight. Goodnight.